We'll go ahead and call the five o'clock meeting to order at 5:03. We have city clerk, can please call and roll? This will be... City council and housing authority joint meeting.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Betancourt.
Here.
Council members Carrillo. Council members Commissioners Carrillo, Loa and Bishop.
Here.
Here.
Okay. We have, then we have...
And Commissioners Brown and Fragasains. Here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, all here, thank you. Public comments, we have time, now's the time for public participation. Do we have IT, do we have anything back here, sir?
Not at this time, yeah.
City clerk, you have anything for the five o'clock meeting?
No, sir, we have one e-comment for consent calendar item for the seven o'clock session.
Okay.
To clarify the record, is Mr. Carrillo attendance or not?
I saw him trying to get online, I think he's having trouble with the link.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Ritchie's saying he's not.
So we got that clarified by the acting city manager.
Correct.
That he cannot attend, okay. Presentation, the city attorney. You're gonna get the sitting at the kitty table today.
I wasn't so lucky. The items to be discussed in closed session are those listed on the agenda, nothing further.
Very good, sir, alright, well go ahead and we will go to closed session and we'll see you back here in a bit.
Yeah, it's probably be easier this way right now.
I see you. Keep it up. I see you.
I insist. I am no drunkard.
Exactly. I shouldn't be standing there.
Did you get my tense?
Okay, yeah, I knew I had.
It's extra effort.
Wow.
Okay, we got one minute. Okay. We're done playing with the dog. We'll go ahead and we'll close out the five o'clock meeting. Could I get the city attorney to please report out on the five o'clock meeting and we can adjourn it, please? The city attorney, is he here? Oh, they're coming in, okay, all right. So as soon as he gets here, we'll do that. I'm two minutes early, that's why. Here's Amber now. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close out the five o'clock closed session meeting. And the city attorney can report out on actions or non-action or...
Thank you very much, your honor. Four members of the city council were present. Two members of the housing authority with council member Carrillo absent and able to participate. All other members otherwise able to participate on all matters. As item 4.1 existing litigation Tomaszewski versus City of Palmdale, the council has provided an update on this matter. There's no further portal action on this item at this time. As item 4.2 existing litigation CDA versus Palmdale, the council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action at this time. As item 4.3 anticipated litigation, the council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action at this time. As item 4.4 existing litigation CDA versus Palmdale, the authority with member Carrillo absent, we're providing an update on this matter and provide unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action on that item at this time. And as item 4.1 of adjacent special meeting anticipated litigation, four members of the council were present with council member Carrillo absent. The council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action at this time. That concludes my report. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. You would think all the time he spent back there to be something to report. All right, thank you very much, sir. So we'll go ahead and we will adjourn the city council and housing authority closed session meeting from five o'clock. We'll call to order the 7:00 PM city council and successor agency and housing authority. We got housing authority on this time as well, right? And...
What? No, sir.
Not yet?
They're adjourned. Housing authorities adjourned.
Okay. All right, so they can leave. All right. Thank you. I wasn't sure, I still saw him sitting there and I figured, they gotta be out here someplace. It's practically a roadmap on these folks, you know? Okay, so we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of our troops. Can we, can we have, let's see, George Ventura, could you lead us in the pledge, please? And then we'll, then we'll give it a minute for moment of silence. No, no, you have to come up here.
So, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Remain silent for upset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, city clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bettencourt.
Here.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Here.
Councilmember Loa.
Here.
And councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. So far, so good. All right, we've got some presentations this evening.
So tonight, I actually feel very privileged that JJ is on vacation because I get to award this warrior award to someone very special to the city. I'll read off the nomination right now. Armin always goes above and beyond as a city of Palmdale employee. From working endless nights broadcasting city meetings to working weekends to cover events, her dedication shines. But during the COVID crisis, even as her duties increased, she never skipped a beat. Her dedication to our community, health and safety has continued. And even as the world has tired of the messaging around COVID and the need to get vaccinated, Armin found more passion to share the vaccination message. She created the Our Shot Palmdale poster contest as a way to inspire our community to share their own artistic expression around this important public service messaging. We received beautiful posters, many from local youth, and the artists will be awarded tonight. Armin's hard work and dedication makes an impact in our community every day. But it's the extra efforts like the Our Shot poster contest that helps to make us all shine. So, Armin?
All right, I'll keep it brief because as you all know, I'm much more comfortable behind the camera. So, I'm a little bit out of my element right now. But I just want to say thank you to our city manager JJ Marie, our city council for this recognition. I'm extremely proud to work for this great organization. And I also want to say thank you to my family who came out to support me tonight. And of course... And of course, I should mention our amazing communications team. John, Stella, Heidi, Kristen, they all inspire me with their creativity and professionalism every day. And I absolutely would not be able to do the job that I do without them. So, thanks again.
She's good, you're here.
She wants a blue one for UCLA. Look at me, look at me, please. There you go. All right, I'm gonna do a couple. Okay. Steve, I have no ideas, like our phone. Get out there. All right, one, two, three. Yeah, we're good.
You guys gotta save that picture because you know, she's got pictures of you guys. You guys gotta save that picture because you know, she's got pictures of you guys. Yeah, so we've got...
I'm the reader today. Do you want to read it?
Alright, sorry, we'll speak up.
One second, mayor.
This is really for in here because we all learn to protect. But for the millions of people at home that are trying to listen in. So, Parks and Recs Month. One of the community's most important assets as far as a place within the community to gather and to do the, you know, recreate, relax, is our parks. And Parks and Recs Month, I'm going to, I'm gonna have Marie read this. But this is a proclamation for Parks and Recs Month. So Marie? Oh, there it was.
So, City of Palmdale proclamation is for Parks and Recreation Month 2021. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play and activity. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by attracting new businesses, promoting community revitalization, increasing tourism, providing jobs and generating revenues. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experience through engaging programs, dynamic events and new opportunities designed to get people involved in their communities. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing inclusive services, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And Parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution through the application of the skills of its community stakeholders in community engagement, collaboration and leadership. And whereas the National Recreation and Park Association has released a public awareness campaign, "Our Park and Recreation Story", to inspire citizens to share their own park and recreation stories on social media and at park events about how the many benefits of utilizing park facilities, programs and services have helped themselves and their families. Now therefore, I, Stephen D. Hoffbauer, mayor of the City of Palmdale, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month. Our Park and Recreation Story. I call upon all citizens to share how Parks and Recreation has helped our community become stronger, more vibrant and more resilient. Let us celebrate the cultural riches of our community that has to offer and recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space and facilities for the health, wellness, development, inspiration and safety of all residents of Palmdale.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, no.
A couple things. That's a lot to live up to, first of all. We can't do what we do without partners in the city, mayor, council, support from the council, our Public Works Maintenance Department, our CIP Department, our staff out there who put on the programs and services, our Public Safety Department. It's a, it's a big team effort to accomplish all of those goals. I did want to read, we have been collecting some stories as the proclamation said. We've been collecting some stories from some of our residents on their park story. And I thought this one kind of hit home when I was reading through them today. Kind of hit on one of the big topics that the council's been discussing. Elizabeth says, "Parks help our family and communities improve and enhance psychological well-being, especially during COVID-19." I thought that was pretty important in terms of their story and what Parks has done for them over the last year. Thank you for this.
Thanks. Eric is one of the key management members over there, Parks and Recs. But all those young kids you see out there in the red shirts are the ones that are making that rubber meet the road. And so, he's accepting this on behalf of all of you guys that are out there. And, you know, remember, when you walk around, take a look. Take a look at those poems that are in the concrete around there. Those are other park users that wrote those and that's stuff that comes from their heart. So, thank you very much, your honor. Yes, sir. Okay, so we've got sheriff boosters. You want to come down and help with this, Richard? So, Dr. Rick Garrison, Mr. Loa, Pepe Eads and Sherry Crane. Presentation of certificates acknowledging their two years of dedicated service at the Palmdale Sheriff Boosters. And it looks like the captain has some as well here. Captain, you want to tell us what this is about a little bit and what these guys do?
I have no idea. No, you know, I have to, I have to thank our boosters. Our deputies are wonderful, they're amazing, they love this community, they live in this community. But just like Sir Robert Peel said in 1829, "The people are the police and the police are the people." Public safety comes from the community. The deputies are out there full-time, doing the work, driving around, contacting people. But it really, it's our community that steps up and says, "This is right, this is wrong, this is what we like to see, this is what we don't like to see." And the boosters are a phenomenal resource to Palmdale Station. Both the AV boosters and Palmdale boosters, they provided us a lot. Financially, the money is great where the county might not have a budget for certain tools and items. For example, we got first aid kits that we can put in a sergeant's car that if we had a traumatic incident, a large traumatic incident, the deputies could respond. They would have the equipment to provide first aid to multiple, many casualties. Tragically, in May of 2018, we had such a disaster at Highland High School. So, it's the, the resources that the Palmdale boosters are able to provide us. But most importantly, they're able to provide communication and influence within the community. If we need information, we can get out, that is a channel we can get out into the community. If the community wants to talk to the sheriff's department, the boosters are a resource for that. So we're always looking for volunteers for all the groups that we have throughout the sheriff's department. But our boosters in particular, I'd like to recognize tonight. Our recent past president, president was Dr. Rick Garrison. Thank you very much. A secretary, I'll just name her. And then our secretary, Pepe Eads. I tell you, this is a working woman right here. The county has a way of rewarding good work with more work. And that's what we do. And Richard Loa, thank you very much. He's our vice president.
So they got official sheriff department certificates and Dr. Garrison, there you go. Now you guys need to take a look around too because some of the things like working with our sheriff boosters and with... There you go, Richard. And with the AV boosters, they've worked really hard to put together... They got the traffic investigation truck that just came out. And then, what's the other one? Search and Rescue just got a new truck. Literally, the search and rescue truck had gotten called to go up to an incident and it wouldn't start and the dashboard fell off. So it was, it was time for a new truck. So those guys pitched in, they got new trucks for, for both those guys. So this is important work that, that they take care of here.
One additional person to mention is Sherry Crane. She's a treasurer. Again, it's a working position within our boosters. She couldn't be here tonight, but we can't thank her enough for her years and years and years of assistance.
Councilman Bishop also works to help coordinate between the two different stations with the boosters and is a member of the Antelope Valley Sheriff's Booster. So thank you for that. Hence, that's why I dragged him up here to do the pledge earlier, so. Thanks, everybody. Who's, Marie? Who's gonna help you with this one? Heidi? So, you see these posters here, the one-shot, one-shot poster contest we had? And there's a number of individuals here. And John, you want to go ahead and take this for me?
So, as Armin explained, someone, or in, in the introduction to Armin, one of the things we saw during this whole COVID was a little bit of COVID fatigue. We probably all still have it. We heard all about wash your hands, wear your mask and everything. But our job was to get messaging out because it was a very, very important topic. We did weekly videos, you probably saw some of them, got a lot of response. So, towards the end of the year, it was really on Armin's heart to do something to get more messaging out and to, and bring in some of the young people because the vaccination rates were lower. So she brainstormed this contest. And we were jazzed to get so many beautiful renditions of posters. And we've selected three, but we really had, it was, it was not easy because we got some really good stuff. But we got three great ones here tonight. And do you want me to announce the winners? Okay. Well, our first place winner could not make it tonight because it's his birthday. It was, it's Miguel Chavez and his poster is right over here. This is our shot Palmdale, so, nice stuff. And Miguel, for his, for his efforts, gets a hundred dollar gift card. Alright, pretty cool. Our second place was Chelsea Williams. Come on, Chelsea. Congratulations. And Chelsea, that's your, the second one, right? So take a look at Chelsea's work right here. It's our shot Palmdale, local artist. So here's your certificate. You want to say anything?
Can I have just like a minute, just one minute? The reason, what inspired me to create this art is when I would hear my family talk about getting the vaccination, oftentimes they'd be like, "I don't know if I want to get the vaccination." But you know, and you know, the people who's not from, sorry, I'm overwhelmed. The people who don't look like me may say that, that's kind of ignorant, you know? But it stems from somewhere. There's a fear and it stems from somewhere. An example of that is the Tuskegee, I can't even pronounce, I'm so nervous. The Tuskegee, thank you, syphilis experiment. Where black men had received the syphilis experiment and they had a medication to heal them, but they weren't given that. Instead, some of the black men were, continued to live out with the syphilis and the people who administered that to them knew it, to see how that would, what syphilis would do to the human body. That's one of many examples of why black people don't trust the United States with the vaccine. I want to say also, it's still a blessing even with the history that we have as black people. It's still a history to be here in the United States. Because in other countries, they're, they're begging to get vaccines. They're trying to get them because people are dying. So I hope, just a small drop in the bucket in this big ocean of life that if they, if black people see themselves, maybe then they'll feel a little more trustworthy to get the vaccine. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Did you get all that on video, I hope?
Well said, thank you so much. Alright, and in third place, Amberne Todd. She's here, alright. And Amberne, congratulations. And that's yours? Tell us a little bit about that one. That is such a cool, cool drawing.
Well, I was inspired by the iconic Rosie the Riveterre to create this painting. And I substituted it for black families because I have a black family. And yeah.
That's great. Will we have something for you? Thank you, Amberne. Great. Thank you. We also have some certificates for people who also submitted some great work. And I'm gonna read your names. And if you're here, come on up. Dori Diaz. There she is. Thank you. Lucinda Acevedo. Randy Bass. Alright. You know Randy, she's been in some of the art contests before, haven't you? There you go. Here you go. Randy? Naya Jackson? Naya here? Kailene Hollenshed? Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Naya's here. Thanks, ma'am. Kailene Hollenshed? Kailene? Nope. Okay. Billy Anna Padilla? Billy Anna Padilla? No? Deborah McLaurin? Jose Sands? Jose? No? Everybody knows her? We'll just read. All right. And Myra Martinez? And Cynthia Chambers? Brian Fernandez Duran? Heaven Urzaga? And that's it. Those are all our participants. Thanks, everyone, for being a part of it.
Okay, Mr. Avram Harris, please. So, I want to thank Mr. Harris for coming tonight. I had gotten a letter, and I was a little indisposed in the hospital at the time. And we missed making this presentation to the group a couple of weeks ago. So, I asked Mr. Harris here if he could stand in for us, and he will, you will get these over. But this is, the Israeli American Civic Action Network provides, they fight against racism, antisemitism, Holocaust denial, and prevention of genocide, and provide community services to various immigrants relocating into our area. They had, if there's two individuals that were unable to be here tonight, but we had this on the calendar, so Avram stepped in. Sylvia Foti and Grant Arthur Gochin. And we felt it was appropriate to recognize the Israeli American Civic Action Network for their work. And so, the Israeli Civic Action Network was founded in 2018 to empower Israelis living in America and bridge a growing divide between American policymakers and Israel. And a story of Israeli American experience is one of faith, fortitude, and progress. A story connected to key facets of American identity, including our nation's commitment to freedom of religion and conscience. And throughout history, the Israeli people have demonstrated an unbreakable spirit, overcoming suffering, cruel oppression, violence, and bigotry. And unfortunately, Israeli American men, women, and children continue to face antisemitic discrimination, violence, and persecution today, and in places of worship continue to be vandalized and destroyed. Whereas there are 36 states and 4,000-plus Israeli and American ICANN advocates engaged with their city, state, and federal officials. And ICANN supports fair treatment, equal rights, civic empowerment for all, regardless of race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, or sexual orientation. And the city of Palmdale would like to thank the Israeli American Civic Action Network for the profound civic service that they provide for immigrant families and the difference they continue to make in our society and our way of life. So, I'd like to present this on behalf of the entire City Council. It'd be an honor and pleasure to join Israeli Americans in their desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. The residents of the city of Palmdale are called upon to learn more about the heritage and contribution of Israeli Americans. I think that's really important because a lot of people lose sight of their own heritage sometimes. So, Avram, I'd like to give this to you, sir. On behalf of the organization, I would like to thank the city of Palmdale, the mayor, and the council. I'd also like to add, if there's any time in the future when I'm honored with a proclamation, I'd rather have the helmet.
Mayor, I'd like to note that Mr. Harris previously served on the Planning Commission for several years. I think he served with you at the time. And he's also on our reapportionment committee, and I wish to thank you, Mr. Harris, for serving the city.
So, this is the first chance we've gotten to actually have a critter back here. And this is always my favorite part of the council meetings because I haven't been bit. And yeah, no, man, I just, but I tell you what, we have some lovable critters over there. I know that they're busting at the seams to get these guys adopted. And it looks like he came right out of a movie, doesn't he? Look at this. Jesse, tell us a little bit about this critter.
Well, Virgil came to us today. And I'm not going to hold back. He wasn't returned. And he's only 10 months old, so they didn't spend a lot of time with him. He was adopted in Lancaster and brought back to us. So, we took him in, and our first time meeting him today, we went out in the yard, and everything they said about the dog, not true. He knows how to fetch. He's a puppy. He'll play with you when he fetches. He knows how to shake. He'll sit down with you, you know, as soon as you get comfortable. And basically, he'll just lean up against you. Oh, yeah. But Virgil's 10 months old. He's got all his shots. He's already been neutered. And just have to make an appointment at the shelter to spend some one-on-one time with him and see if you want to take him home. He needs work because he is a puppy. You know, he's 10 months old, and he is a wheaten terrier. So, at first, I thought he was an haredale, but he is a wheaten terrier. And look at his love bug here.
So, Carrie, do we have anything special for people that might look to do any adoptions tonight about now?
We always have. We always have something special. If you adopt one of our City Council Cute Critters or one of our Friday, on our Palmdale Facebook page, Palmdale Public Safety, we have Four-legged Friday, which is dedicated to all things animal-related. We feature animals that are in need of adoption there as well, and anybody that adopts. You are, come on into our office, and we will give you a goodie bag of stuff for you and your new best friend. So, we always want to remind people to adopt. Don't shop. Any type of breed of animal that you can think of is available at a shelter or rescue. Spay neuter is incredibly important, incredibly important, and microchipping as well. Anybody that has lost an animal during the Fourth of July can attest to having a microchip is the quickest way to get your animal returned to you. And spay neuter and microchipping is also mandatory in the city of Palmdale if that wasn't encouragement enough, so.
Look at that face. Look at that face. Thank you. Thanks again, Jesse. And if you want to volunteer, they always are in need of volunteers over there at the animal shelter. You have to get trained, just like the dog, but generally, the volunteers are easier to train, right? Or maybe not. Yeah, so sometimes. So anyways, but they'll put you through and they'll put you to work, okay? Thanks again, Jesse. Appreciate. Good seeing you back. Okay, all right. Need a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. City Clerk?
Mayor Hopfauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Timbattenkort?
You're on mute.
Mayor Pro Timbattenkort?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you now. Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cadeo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have public comments. I know we have a couple of people here this evening. If you have, if you wish to address the council on matters listed or not listed on the agenda, it's helpful if you fill out the card. They're out there. And we have a couple of them there. And it helps us in order to get back to you on your issues sometimes. We have, one, we'll take this public comment. Do we want to do this one?
Absolutely. Yeah.
With the item? Okay. So, double check with IT. Do you have any online?
We do have one online.
Okay. Can we go with that one first?
Yes. Attendee by the name of Daisy will be unmuting your microphone.
Could you let us know what item it is on the agenda or if it's an unlisted item, please? Daisy?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. It's for item 16.1.
Okay. Let's see. Which one is that? Couple pages back here?
That's the wireless.
Do we just go ahead and take the comment now? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Daisy.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today, virtually. My name is Daisy Wukampang. I'm here on behalf of Verizon on item 16.1. Verizon appreciates the city's efforts to update its existing ordinance with regards to wireless telecommunications facilities. We also appreciate the staff's efforts to work with Verizon on some of their suggested revisions to the draft ordinance, and thanks staff accordingly. I am here today to urge City Council to further direct staff to continue working with the industry as the new proposed ordinance is implemented, as there are still items identified by Verizon's outside counsel in a letter that was previously sent to Planning Commission on May 13, 2021. I understand that staff adopted one minor change to the public right-of-way provisions that were suggested by our council. However, our council's letter contains additional recommendations to the draft ordinance that would align the draft ordinance more with federal and state requirements. As such, I requested the letter be incorporated to the administrative record herein by reference. More specifically, Verizon encourages the city to look at provisions regarding eligible facilities requests and modifications to approved plans and term extensions that are provided for eligible facilities requests. Additionally, the draft ordinance has sections that impose vague requirements for stealth design, camouflage, landscaping, views, least visible equipment, et cetera. From speaking with staff, we understand why this approach was made. However, more reasonable specific guidelines with exemptions for technical invisibility provides carriers with more definitive guidelines to follow. As such, Verizon urges City Council to further direct staff to continue working with the industry as the new proposed ordinance is implemented. We look forward to continuing good relationship with staff and the city in more detail and collaborate about the.
Time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Daisy. IT, you had another?
We do, Mayor. Attendee with the last name Roseberry. We will be unmuting you now.
Roseberry?
Yes, the last name is Roseberry. First name is Karen. Karen Roseberry.
Okay. And which item is this on, ma'am?
I don't have the agenda in front of me. I believe that there is an agenda item coming up in regards to the recall, excuse me, in regards to the vote of no confidence for District Attorney Gascon.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I was speaking in favor of this no confidence note. I believe that it is well within the purview of the Palmdale City Council to address this matter. Right now, we have a district attorney who is acting outside of the scope of his authority. And we would just, you know, request that the City Council take a similar direction as 22 other cities have done and would indeed vote no confidence in the actions that have been taking place. These actions include the usurping of the will of the voters on fail that was voted on in the very same election where Gascon was elected and at a higher percentage and at a higher majority. It includes the fact that the legislature has passed laws on numerous misdemeanor crimes that are no longer being prosecuted. Sentencing directives have been issued and supported by the voters and by the legislature that are no longer being upheld. And when we have one elected official who believes himself having the authority to change the law when that is not what he was elected to do, that is deeply disturbing. And it is a place where checks and balances need to be exercised. And it is a place where other elected officials, just like yourselves, City Council, and just like other city councils within Los Angeles County have done for the actions that he's taking, for the fact that he is essentially rewriting what justice is, and the fact that there are numerous victims that are not receiving the justice that is due as a part of due process and as a part of the existing legislative matters that are there, the existing law that is present and that should be being enforced and that should be becoming before the courts, but right now is actually being held up from prosecution. And so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So, I have Andy Estrada? Andy? What item is this on, sir? Or is it general comment? Okay.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Andy. It's Andy Estrada. It's a pleasure to meet you all. I am a resident of Palmdale and an active member of the Smoke-Free Animal Valley Coalition in Palmdale, where we advocate for an increase in smoke-free areas by virtue of the harmful effects that secondhand smoke has on our population. Today, I would like to express a concern that I have with secondhand smoke exposure in our public areas. On June 12th, I attended an event that was organized for the purpose of picking up cigarette butt litter at Dominique Muzari Park. Upon arrival, and at first glance, there appeared to be little to no tobacco waste, but I was greatly mistaken. As we broke off into teams and started searching, this is the summation of what we found in an hour. A total of 1,347 cigarette butts is what our joint effort found. Unfortunately, the majority of the tobacco litter I found was in the mulch surrounding the kids' playgrounds. As I was picking up the litter, a curious mother walked up to me and asked me and my team what we were doing. After explaining the event to her, she thanked us for our work and expressed how her three-year-old daughter has picked up cigarette litter multiple times in the past at her favorite playground. According to the CDC, cigarette smoking is responsible for more than 480,000 deaths per year in the United States, including more than 41,000 deaths resulting from secondhand smoke exposure. This is about one in five deaths annually, or 1,300 deaths every single day. Our residents, especially children, should not be exposed to secondhand smoke. When I was a child, I suffered from asthma, and the last thing that I needed was a stranger smoking near me at the park or when I was out with my mom and dad running errands. And as stated in the report by the American Lung Association, secondhand smoke is responsible for between 150,000 and 300,000 lower respiratory tract infections in infants and children under 18 months of age, resulting in between 7,515,000 hospitalizations each year. It also causes 430 sudden infant syndrome deaths in the U.S. annually. Now that I'm older and I realize that my voice can help make my city a better place to live, I come here to raise awareness about this issue in our community that is harming our youth. I know that we can't police the personal choice of smoking tobacco, but we can set clear boundaries of where smoking is allowed so people who choose not to smoke tobacco are not punished by someone else's actions. Palmdale is a city that deserves to flourish as a leader in healthy living, and I believe. and I believe enforcing new and existing smoke-free ordinances would help us get there. I appreciate what you have all done recently through the Palmwood Cares Initiative, and I thank you for caring about your community during these tough times. I look forward to becoming more involved in the city and hope to learn from you all in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I have Angela Garcia. Thank you for doing that, sir. I know that, uh, there were a couple groups that were out there handling that. That should be one where there's no need to have to do that, so.
What amazes me is that you counted all those cigarette butts.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Angela, is there an item in particular, or?
It's non-agendized today. All right, so, good evening, city councilmembers. My name is Angela Garcia, and I'm an active member of the Smoke Free AV Coalition in Palmdale, where we advocate for more smoke-free outdoor areas due to the harmful effects of secondhand smoke. I would like to raise concerns regarding the environmental impact of smoking as well as provide you with information regarding secondhand smoke exposure in our community. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, no one is safe from secondhand smoke, and even a small exposure has been found to be harmful to health. Secondhand smoke has been found to cause heart disease, lung cancer, and strokes for adults who have never smoked in their lives. These are also the leading causes of death and disability in the United States. According to the CDC, passing smoke-free laws for all public places can protect non-smokers from these health effects. These laws discourage the youth from smoking and for current smokers to quit. This is truly one of the only ways to protect residents from secondhand smoke exposure. According to Tobacco-Free California, a hundred and thirty-five million pounds of cigarette butts were found in the environment in the United States. Cigarettes contain harmful chemicals that can destroy soil, waterways, and wildlife. Cigarette butts are the most common item found in cleanups. During our cleanup at Dominic Missouri Park, we were able to pick up a hundred, sorry, one thousand three hundred and forty-seven pieces of cigarettes and other smoking devices. So, this is, um, an example of what we were able to pick up that day. Cigarette butts are poisonous to children and animals if ingested and can be deadly for them. As you know, a lot of children and dogs visit public parks, so this raises concern for me. Cigarette butts can cause fires that result in the destruction of homes, wildlife, and nature. It is important to help eliminate the impact that tobacco has. I truly believe that your interests are to protect each of our residents. I find it awful that people are getting sick from something that they now have no control over. As city councilmembers, you can make a difference by banning outdoor smoking in public areas to protect our residents from these harmful substances. These people labeled in the statistics are not smokers, they are victims of secondhand smoke exposure. I truly believe that with your help, we can help end unnecessary exposure to secondhand smoke as well as preserve the earth by being conscious of the environment. I appreciate all the effort that city councilmembers have done in keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, could I ask Angela and Andy? Uh, Mike was trying to hide, see the guy waving his hand over there?
Yeah.
I'd like you to go talk to him because, um, he's in charge of neighborhood services, and he has a code enforcement, neighborhood compliance officers that will, uh, um, at least try to psych these guys, uh, when they know about it. So if you talk to him, maybe he can, maybe you guys can, uh, maybe you can help him direct some of those services, okay? Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
I got grandkids, I don't like it either, so. Uh, Christian Green?
Do we have a timer? I have a timer. Good afternoon, good evening. Uh, my name is Christian Green, uh, how you doing? Uh, Mayor Hoffbauer and to the council, glad to be here. So, um, today I'm speaking in regards to voting no against, um, no confidence resolution. Uh, my name is Christian Green, I was born in a jail cell to a formerly incarcerated mother um, who was also impacted by the war on drugs, so, um, being heavily impacted by the system um, and growing up with grandparents who was also, um, victims of the war on drugs as well. Um, just speaking, uh, just a relative experience and bringing lived experience into this narrative as I'm giving in state statements and statistics and facts and whatnot. I heard earlier on the, on the call, I said that there was about twenty-two cities, there are eighty-eight cities as well as approximately a hundred and forty unincorporated areas. Um, I strongly urge that you vote against the no confidence resolution. As we looked into DA Gascon's special directives and how he is making L.A. County safer and are rooted in research and data, uh, we need to look at the recent poll and how it shows the majority of victims of violent crimes in L.A. County support reforms, focus on rehabilitation, crime prevention, rather than just more incarceration. So in support of crime victims, Gascon recently established the Office First Victims Advisory Board. He also banned the practice of arresting crime victims to force them to appear in court, and he supports legislation to make the victims' compensation fund inclusive of victims of state violence. Um, a recent poll of L.A. crime victims shows strongly support for investments in crime prevention and ongoing victim support. Um, on April twentieth, the L.A. County Board of Supervisors urged the DA and also stakeholders to work together to eliminate cash bail. Uh, Gascon policies are also saving millions of taxpayers' dollars. Uh, the two thousand twenty-one to two twenty-two, uh, state budget for corrections is sixteen billion. So by reducing unnecessarily long sentences, Gascon has already saved hundreds of millions of dollars. Um, black people are over three times more than likely killed than white people to be killed by the police. So sentencing enhancements have also resulted in extreme racial disparities. Black and brown people are also more than three times less likely to be granted parole than their other white counterparts. It's okay to talk about race today, I am a race professor. So the murder of George Floyd, numerous deaths by law enforcement have made clear that the racial injustice that pervades our system, it is not enough to say black lives matter if you are not willing to transform the criminal justice system and make it more fair and equitable. Gascon is using data-driven policies to make all of our communities safer. So I urge you to vote against the no confidence resolution, and that is it. I'm a professor, I'm a youth pastor here, I've been out here since nineteen ninety-eight, so I am a member of this, uh, community, and so I would love for you guys to vote against it. Thank you so much.
You know, the resolution is not on the agenda.
Okay, cool, so I just want to let you know, put that in your head.
Yeah, no, you know where you're at.
Okay, thank you, just like-
Marco Selvres? Yes, sir.
Good evening, brothers and sisters, mayor, councils. Um, I'm gonna echo off of Mr. Green says here, and with the understanding that, uh, that's not on the agenda tonight. But, the fact that this no confidence resolution exists is actually on the agenda on everybody, every night. Having said that, um, you know, I'll give you some statistics. Mr. Gascon had the leading vote, more than anybody else, by more than two hundred and fifty thousand votes. And those people of two hundred and fifty thousand still vote for him and still support him. So then this, this no confidence resolution, I can relate to it growing up in East L.A., where you're out there crying every night, the sheriff's wouldn't go out there, it was that dangerous, right? However, however, to come to this resolution, there's a lot of money being transferred here, to the tune of millions of dollars. And usually, the victims that end up on the end of this is people of color. People of color, I'll say that again, people of color. So unless you lived in our shoes, um, we cannot understand fully why this no confidence resolution is a bad idea to our society. So having said that, Mr. Gascon has been doing this for almost forty years. He's been a chief of police in Mesa Arisona, saying the same thing. And I'm not gonna talk any longer, I just wanna keep it simple, and I will say this to you. His mind and vision is a holistic approach. Trying to get to why these violent people get to this point and creating programs that we can all work with to prevent this from happening again. And that's the holistic approach that all cities, all counties, all states in America need today. So, thank you very much for taking the time.
Appreciate it, thank you. Ms. Richard King, we also had the electronic.
We received an e-comment today. It was a guest user. Says, "I completely support the city attorney with taking on cases as appropriate and request that a no confidence resolution be brought forward as no one should have any confidence in Gascon." Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, now, I'd like to ask, before we move on, we have a couple of folks that we invited to come in to speak on, uh, item number fifteen one. And I'd like approval to, uh, move, um, fifteen point one up on the agenda this time.
So moved.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
I would just note that we'd have to reopen public comment, that's what I wanted to do. We can either do the public comment and then do that item, or reopen public comment on the item.
Okay. Okay, all right. Second, and motion and a second, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go first, and then we can call up the witnesses that we asked to come in this evening?
We can do, your preference.
whichever way works better for you.
Uh, I can, I can give the staff a quote, you can open the public comment. Uh, and I can be relatively brief. At the city council meeting on June twenty-second, the council directed staff to return with an update on a previous inquiry regarding prosecutions within the city of Palmdale. Uh, generally, the officer of the district attorney of respective county within which a city resides is responsible for prosecution of all state law misdemeanors committed within the jurisdiction, that's government code twenty-six five thousand. Um, in special directive twenty dash oh seven, the district attorney directed all deputy district attorneys to reject for filing, with few exceptions, a certain number of cases, underlying criminal activity, I would, uh, correct. Uh, those are, and I'll note if there's exceptions to these, trespass, there is an exception, there are exceptions. Disturbing the peace, there are exceptions. Driving without a valid license under vehicle code twelve five hundred, there are exceptions. Driving with suspended license under vehicle code fourteen six oh one point one A, there are exceptions. Criminal threats under PC four twenty-two. Um, drug and paraphernalia possession under Health and Safety Code eleven through five zero, eleven through five seven, eleven three six four, eleven three seven seven, there's no exceptions. Uh, under the influence of a controlled substance, eleven five fifty, no exceptions. Minor possession of alcohol, no exceptions. Drinking in public, no exceptions. Public intoxication under penal code six forty-seven F, no exceptions. Lloyering under penal code six forty-seven B, C, D, and E, there are exceptions. Lloyering to commit prostitution, no exceptions. And resisting arrest under penal code one forty-eight A, there are exceptions. So the city attorney was directed by council to obtain from the district attorney's office the number of cases that had been rejected for filing under the new directive. And we were able to obtain the cases that were filed by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department that were later rejected by filing. We put together a comparative analysis of those cases over a series of years. So for twenty nineteen, misdemeanor cases submitted for filing, there were four thousand three hundred and twelve. Number of cases rejected was five hundred and sixty-three, or a percentage of thirteen of the total were rejected. In twenty twenty, four thousand one hundred and eighty-one misdemeanor cases were submitted for filing by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. Eight hundred and seventy-two of those were rejected for filing, or twenty-one percent. And, uh, for, through May twenty twenty-one, two thousand sixty cases were submitted for filing by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. Twelve hundred and eight were rejected, for a total of fifty-nine percent. That completes my report, I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I'd like to inquire, um, are theft misdemeanors not included in the directive? Are they still prosecuting those? Petty theft and those kinds of things?
Under PC forty-four, that is not included in the directive.
So those are being prosecuted by the district attorney's office now?
Uh, I believe those are still being filed by the district attorney's office.
Yeah. Maybe Mr. Hattami can elucidate on that. Uh, I just wanted to point out that, uh, what we're trying to do is to determine whether the city of Palmdale should, uh, empower our city attorney to prosecute misdemeanors, particularly in crimes that affect, uh, the population, um, and some of these kind of offenses.
Yeah. Well, speaking of quality life issues, I thought illegal dumping was supposed to be on there. That was my main concern while looking at having the city to prosecute. Uh, cases like this would have been for illegal dumping, because that's, that's one of the biggest issues we have out there right now, I mean.
They just, I think the issue was, they just weren't included in the directive. But I think the end effect is, when we end up getting our report on that and the fireworks later, we're gonna find out how many of these they're kicking when they get down there.
Okay, that's, that's the numbers I really want to see, because if there's anything I want to see our city attorney's office start prosecuting, it would be for the illegal dumping, first and foremost.
Okay, so, uh, we've got a couple folks that we've asked to come in here to provide us some perspective on this, and, uh, and so, um, Mr. Tommy, or, do you want to go first, or do you want Tanya? Okay.
Is Tanya here? Tanya's here already? Is she?
Can't hear her.
Is she here already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there she is.
It's like the cone of silence on Get Smart with these things.
Right. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for inviting me here to speak. So, I don't live in Palmdale, I live in Santa Clarita. Um, but I've worked in the Antelope Valley exclusively for over ten years, and I still work in the Antelope Valley as a deputy district attorney. I have three open child murder cases here. I also consider Palmdale my second home, just like Lancaster. Um, I've spent the majority of my career as a prosecutor here in the Antelope Valley. Uh, my church is here in the Antelope Valley, and I have a lot of friends here. Uh, I have a lot of close friends, and I care about the community, and I care about the people in the Antelope Valley. Many city councilmembers ask me, who do I represent? Even though I'm a deputy district attorney, obviously, I don't represent my office here speaking to you because I disagree with many of the things the DA is doing. Um, but I also don't represent any organization, I don't represent the recall, uh, I don't represent any political organization. I stand for victims, I stand for survivors, I stand for the people and things that are happening to them, and I try to be their voice as much as I can. I want to let you know the Gabriel Fernandez case and the case of Steve Owen wouldn't have ended up the way they did if George Gascon was in charge. And I think you need to really think about that. We are not allowed to file special circumstances on any case going forward. That means if a police officer is killed here in the Antelope Valley, specifically in Palmdale, we will not be allowed to file a special circumstance. We will not be allowed to seek even life without the possibility of parole. That means a police killer can be eligible for parole under elder parole, usually after they serve twenty years. In the city of Palmdale, if a child is tortured and murdered, we cannot seek the special circumstance of intentional murder by torture, ever. If somebody goes into a school and kills multiple children, we cannot seek the special circumstance, ever. Blanket policies do not serve the public. You can believe and have, have, have a belief and a culture in public safety, you can have a belief and a culture in equality, you can have a belief and a culture in justice, and you can follow the law. They're not mutually exclusive, you don't just have to follow one or the other, you can follow all of them. Part of that, though, is following the law. And for everybody who doesn't know what special circumstances are, um, in California, if you commit a murder, so the first has to be murder, and it has to be in the first degree, and there's something additional, such as the torture of a child, or a hate crime. If you commit a hate crime and kill a person of color, we are not allowed to charge the hate crime special circumstance, ever. For the first two weeks when George Gascon took office, we couldn't charge hate crimes at all. So how is that somebody who is fighting for people of color? If we can't even charge a hate crime at all? We have individuals in the AAPI community, we have individuals in the Jewish community that feel left out and abandoned. There are numerous individuals in the Jewish community that have been attacked in downtown Los Angeles, and the DA hasn't said anything about that. Hasn't stood up for them and said, "If anybody commits a hate crime against anybody, we are gonna prosecute that to the fullest extent of the law." That sets a deterrent. That tells the community that the DA is fighting for everybody, including vulnerable victims. And the DA doesn't do that, and he thinks it's okay. And the DA doesn't do that, and he thinks it's okay. The DA should fight for all of us, for every one of us. When it comes to Palmdale, specifically when we were talking about misdemeanors, he won't charge resisting arrest, or disturbing the peace, or criminal threats, or solicitation for prostitution. So anybody can go into a store in Palmdale and harass patrons, and then they'll call the sheriff's department, and the sheriff's firm will come out, and they'll attack a police officer, and you know what, nothing will be charged. That first off brings down the morale of the police department. Second, store owners, store owners feel helpless, that nothing's going to happen to help them. And I want to let you all know, I believe in reforms, most of us do. But to do reforms regarding misdemeanors, which most people who get a misdemeanor, and if it's their first misdemeanor, they should be given a chance to get better and to come back into society, that's important. But did you know, and, and I think most of you know, but I want to let you know, if you don't charge misdemeanors, you can't give diversion. There's no such thing as diversion without charging, uh, uh, the case, because when you charge a case, then you tell the individual, I'm going to give you diversion, I'm going to give you all of these things to do to get better. Programs, I'm going to give you as, as many programs as you can to get better, but if you don't complete those programs, you are going to go to jail. Which is what happens when individuals who are addicted, because most individuals who are addicted to drugs should not go to jail or prison. That doesn't help them, and that doesn't help society. But, you have to make sure that they realize that if they don't go to a program and get better, then something's going to happen to them. And anybody who has children knows that, that's important. There is no diversion, because we don't charge anything, and so anybody who says that the DA is giving diversion, this is not true. Because it's a diversion without any type, without any type of hammer, or any type of hook, or anything like that. Let me talk to you about juvenile cases, because the welfare of children is very important to me. I want to let you know the DA has never tried one case. He's never walked into court once and said George Gaskon for the people, ever. He never did it in San Francisco, he's never done it here, and he's never worked in juvenile court. I worked in juvenile court in the old courthouse for over a year, I participated in team court for over a year. I participated in numerous events to help children here in the Antelope Valley. I'm here to tell you the majority of children and juveniles can and should be rehabilitated. But, if you are sixteen or seventeen, like we have an individual in Antelope Valley, who's now twenty, and you kill somebody, or you rape somebody, that's an adult crime. And there never should be a blanket policy where you can never transfer a juvenile up, up to adult court. What about if you're seventeen and a half and you kill multiple people? George Gaskon thinks you should be released at twenty five, that's dangerous. It's not, it's not, it's dangerous for the public, for that to happen. And that doesn't mean we're trying kids, or putting kids in prison, because if you're seventeen and a half and you're killing somebody, or you belong to a gang and you're raping or killing somebody. We deserve to have public safety, and releasing somebody at twenty five doesn't help anybody. And, and doesn't mean that we don't show empathy, we do, and doesn't mean that most, most juveniles should be rehabilitated, they should. Juveniles who steal things, juveniles who get in fights, those things happen, and it's our job as a society to help them. So I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about individuals who are murdering and raping individuals, that those are adult crimes, and we need to have protection of the public, and George Gaskon doesn't allow that at all. I want to let you know that George Gaskon got rid of the gang prosecutor here in the Antelope Valley. And the question I'm going to ask you is, did he talk to any of you about that? Because I know he didn't talk to Lancaster, because I asked the mayor and the city council, did he say, hey, um, there's a gang prosecutor out here, he's actually funded, uh, um, through the city and through the federal government. And he's carrying numerous cases, what do you think about us if we remove him from the, from the courthouse, how's that going to affect Palmdale? How's that going to affect Lancaster? So when anybody tells you that George Gaskon is getting together with others to come out with some sort of policy to help everybody, that's totally untrue. I've been there for seven months, he's never come down to my office once, he's never said, hey, Mr. Hatami, this is my vision, this is what I want to get accomplished, what do you think about that? How do you think we can accomplish that? I've been to numerous city councils and spoken, he's never come up once, I've challenged him numerous times to debate, he's never wanted to debate once. And so, part of being a good DA is meeting with all the cities, and saying, these are my policies, what do you think about them? How are they going to affect your community, how are they going to affect what's happening in this community? What do you think about this, what do you think about that? And he doesn't want to do that either, we don't charge the gang allegation in any case, uh, he's disbanded most of the gang prosecutors. And, and as, as many of you know, um, we had a big gang problem here in Antelope Valley for a long time. It's changed a lot, but it's getting worse again. And so we need to make sure if individuals are hurting people, or intimidating people, or doing bad things, where they're actually killing somebody, we need to do something about that. And that's why we have allegations and enhancements, is because of that. Zero bail, arresting individuals and just releasing them within forty eight hours doesn't protect anybody, um, doesn't protect the public, doesn't protect anybody at all. There needs to be punishment, and there also needs to be public safety, and there also needs to be empathy for others too, and there needs to be reforms. So, and I think most people agree that certain things in the criminal justice system need to be changed and looked at, but part of doing that is still following the law. Meeting with all the cities and determining what type of reforms we're going to do, bringing in all the stakeholders, and doing it in an appropriate way where it's safe for everybody. There are numerous other policies, such as, we're not allowed to go to parole hearings, ever. That means any case that was tried here in the Antelope Valley, where it's a murder, and somebody went away, and then that person is up for parole, we're not allowed to go to the hearing, ever. And you know, the risk assessment, so there's a risk assessment, and if the risk assessment from the CDCR says that that person is going to get out of prison and commit more crimes, let's say that, that says it's high, we're still not allowed to go, or say anything. We have moms going there, uh, and having to fight for the murder of their children on their own, by themselves when they're abandoned. That's just not fair, that's just not right. We've had victim advocates in our office for many years, longer than I've been a DA, I've been a DA for fifteen years. I've also been, uh, as a DA, I consider myself a victim advocate, but if you bring in a victim advisory board of nine people that you just selected, that only have your opinions, that's a lack of diversity. Diversity isn't just skin color, it's also opinions, and it's important to have different opinions and different discussions, and he doesn't have that either. And so, uh, I hope, um, leaving you with this information, I'm going to tell you if you have any questions, you can definitely, um, ask me, I would do my best to answer those questions. I know, uh, Mr. Loa had one question regarding petty theft, we do still charge petty theft. Um, I think you have to look at Prop forty seven and Prop fifty seven and AB one oh nine, to really get an understanding of how theft works now. Uh, and George Gaskon was an author of Prop forty seven. And so if you want to know part of the reason why we have such a major homeless problem, is because many people are addicted to drugs, we can't do drug court or anything to help them anymore, we can't give people diversion anymore, and so it hasn't worked. Uh, we do still charge theft, but most of the time it's a misdemeanor, and most of the time they get released right away. Also, there's a, there's a limit, and many people know that if they steal, uh, uh, things under nine hundred fifty dollars, nothing much is going to happen to them. And so that's disappointing, um, but those are policies that George Gaskon has supported before he became the DA, and some that he authored, but we still do charge that. But, having blanket policies, I want to leave the city with this, having blanket policies. Anybody who, who's a lawyer understands that, when it comes to criminal law, the evidence is important, the law is important, public safety is important. Equality is important, doing the right thing is important. If you have a blanket policy, all those get thrown out the window, and all you do is just follow whatever that policy is. And remember this, those policies actually violate the law. The, the, the populace, people voted, and they were against zero bail. People voted in twenty twelve and twenty sixteen for capital punishment, people voted for special circumstances, people voted for the gang allegation. Um, all these things were voted on by the people, and so when he says that, that he has the will of the people, he actually doesn't. Um, because the will of the people, uh, is the law, and he doesn't want to follow the law. So I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Mr. Hatami, I, I have a question. And it is, uh, it's been stated, uh, even tonight, that crime is down, and I think that our sheriffs here in Palmdale have, are really holding the line. We've got a stout police department here in the, in the name of the sheriff's department, uh, they're doing a marvelous job. But obviously, if they're arresting people for crimes, and then they're not prosecuted, that's a problem for our community. Is crime in fact down because of the policies of Mr. Gaskon?
They're not, overall crime is actually up, and the data and science totally supports that. So I'm going, going to let you know that murders in the county are up ninety five percent, uh, murders in the city are up twenty two percent. Shootings in the city are up over fifty percent, rapes are up almost seven point eight percent. Crime is up in Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County, it has skyrocketed. The amount of rejects as a result of George Gaskon's policy in Pomona, it's over a thousand, in Santa Clarita, it's almost six hundred, in Lancaster, it's over six hundred, in Glendale, it's over four hundred. Walnut, I can, I can list numerous cities, that we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of cases, thousands of cases that have not been filed as a result of George Gaskon's policy. Crime has increased, and even nationally, even the president, President Biden has said, crime has increased in the United States. And so I'm going to let you know, in California, specifically Los Angeles, shootings, homicides, violent crime has dramatically increased in Los Angeles during the seven months that George Gaskon has been the DA.
And you know, we talk in terms of numbers, and it's abstract, but in fact, what we're talking about is people who are hurt, people who are damaged, people who are having things taken away from them, homes being broken into. I'm speaking to you, I've been an attorney since nineteen seventy seven, and I've been a defense attorney, and I'm proud to be a defense attorney, but I'm also a member of society. And it's important to keep our community safe. And, uh, so when I hear some of these things, that they, that the district attorney of Los Angeles County is no longer prosecuting certain crimes, that I know affect people detrimentally. It is just astonishing to me, that we've reached this point. And, uh, I hope something gets done about it, and what we're about tonight is to consider whether we should have our city attorney prosecute these misdemeanors that have been listed here. Because all of those are, uh, offenses that affect human beings and affect our residents. And, uh, that's, that's what we're trying to reach and find out, I know there's some logistical problems, uh, but we're trying, we're going to address that tonight, I hope, and move forward.
And what you have is, when you have smaller level crimes, and you don't do anything about those smaller level crimes, they increase, that's what happens. Individuals who believe that they're not going to get in trouble for committing smaller level crimes, then increases, all of a sudden you're going to have somebody enter someone's house, and that's always dangerous.
That's the deal that we've been getting complaints about, is, uh, with the propositions, so they don't do anything about all these thefts, uh, and things like that. And, so, residents and shopkeepers are, are getting trespass, no trespass orders, keep away orders. That's one that's on the list, they don't, so your only option is to get a court order to keep this guy out of your store, or off of your property, or away from your home, but it won't, the, the, the DA refuses to deal with it. And so I got shop owners all the time coming to me going, somebody's going to get hurt, and get hurt bad, and then who's going to end up, you know, the, the shop owners are afraid, uh, that they're, that they're going to be, uh, dealt with. I got, I, I, I got a friend of mine who was killed out on Rancho Vista Boulevard, by a three time drunk driver, driving on a suspended license, uh, hit and run. Uh, there's probably about eight or nine or ten things that this guy has, and his attorney comes in and says, I want you to c- cut this down, I want you to get rid of this. And, I'm going to go downtown, I'm going to get a better deal, and in fact, they are. So here's a guy that's dead, and he, the defense attorney's attitude, and he's looked, he gets in the elevator and he says, hey, nothing's going to bring back that guy. I said, that, that guy was Mike, okay, burn that in your head, your guy killed him, because he shouldn't have been out behind that wheel drunk, and then left the scene like a little worm, okay? But, it's okay, you know, we're going to let all that stuff go, and we're, maybe we'll get him for a hit and run, you know, and, uh, time served, you know, when this guy's got a rap sheet that long. But the, the, the shop owners, uh, the mom and pops, uh, that are out here, and we're talking about, the vast majority of these mom and pops are operated by, being operated by immigrant families and stuff out here. And they are, they're at the end of their ropes, they don't, they, they can't stop anybody, uh, they, these guys come in and intimidate them, and, you know. If, if he, if the DA can't handle the keep away orders at the one sixty twos, we ought to be able to have our city attorney manage those, you know? If there's, if there's no potential for repercussion, I, I don't, I don't know where we go, you know?
It's not fair to your community, the DA's number one job is to protect the community and make it safer for everyone. And, you know, can you imagine, just to let you know, for two weeks, George Gaskon didn't think if a child's arm was broken, that we should be able to charge great bodily injury. Can you think about, that just, it's, I mean, and for people to come up here and talk about him in some sort of way, children are the most vulnerable, how, how, how is that, that, he has absolutely no empathy?
Well, the, 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 the battery, the battery, uh, I was reading some of those directives. For batteries, my understanding that it has to be, uh, loss of sight, concussion, broken bone, or loss of a, uh, use of an organ, before they'll prosecute it as a felony. That's ridiculous, I mean, I just, I'm, I, yeah, I've got two kidneys and two eyeballs, but, you know.
No, I, reforms doesn't mean not following the law, and that's really the problem, is that we could still follow the law, and have reforms, and still have public safety and justice.
But, I, I don't. Mr. Bishop, do you want to have anything you want to add?
No, I just wanted to, to go back to my earlier comment about the illegal dumping, and the prosecuting of that, I think that's an issue that needs to be on this list, that needs to be addressed.
That it, you already are handling those and, uh, the fireworks issues, correct, sir?
So, if it's a violation of our municipal code, my office is vested with the ability to prosecute those, if they are, if someone's issued a misdemeanor citation, my office would prosecute that.
Okay, so you're already prosecuting this?
When the misdemeanor citations occur, correct?
Okay.
Do, do, does the council know that DA George Gaskon disbanded the code enforcement DA investigators here in the North County? So they're gone too, without talking to you, or talking to Lancaster, he just disbanded, um, the DA investigators who handled, uh, code enforcement?
But that was the guy that we just bought the scales for, the catchy illegal dumpers that are overweight, because we figured out, they won't prosecute them, there's no skin off their nose, if they get caught dumping, but if they're overweight, so we bought him the scales, and now he disbands it.
Then, there was a, there was a group of DAIs, a lot of them were up here, who monitored individuals, uh, using child porn, also monitored individuals who would violate PC two ninety, which is sex registration. He, he got rid of most of them too, without probably talking to you or talking to Lancaster.
Haven't heard anybody from anybody, the first guy we talked to, and we see out there at, at, uh, some of these events, and we appreciate that, so.
Maybe Mr. Carrillo wants to say something?
Mr. Carrillo, can you have any questions for him?
Yes, I do. Uh, uh, a couple of questions for the deputy district attorney. You mentioned that crime has been going up, and yet, unfortunately, it's been going up throughout the nation. We've all been aware of what COVID has done for the entire nation, and worldwide, really. So I've, I've listened and heard to a lot of reports where, because of COVID, crimes have gone up. You also mentioned that, uh, crime has gone out nationwide. I don't think that's going to have anything to do with crimes going out nationwide, or that it had anything to do with the results that we are experiencing because of COVID. So to me, it is, it is sad to hear the things that you mentioned, the things that, uh, are not being looked at, but at the same time, I think I need to look at the other side too. I'm a person of, uh, color, I'm brown, and I have experienced myself, uh, discrimination. I have not been jailed, but I have been pushed away from even, uh, education because of who I am, because of my accent. I, I do believe that the crimes, um, that are going up is because of many different factors, not necessarily because of the policies of, uh, Mr. Gaskon. And if the answer is, he's not following the law, not, uh, having policies that are fair and effective, and if he's not able to, uh, come and debate with you. Then, there should be other way to look at it too. I think that we should all be putting pressure on him to come and talk to you, talk to us, uh, have him tell us what his policies really mean, what the purpose behind this. But I, I am excited to hear what you have mentioned, all the, the abuses, uh, for kids, as you said, they're the most vulnerable people, that we could protect them. That, that, those are my comments on, on what you've said so far. Um that, that, those are my comments on, on what you've said so far. Uh there's another speaker. Uh a question for the mayor. Mayor, I, I received some uh questions from um Time Limit. And I just wanna clarify that this is not a public comment period and people who invited to speak are not limited with the three-minute rule. I just wanted to verify that, is that correct?
That's correct, uh-huh.
So that's, that's what I have to say for now.
Okay, thanks.
And, and just my only comment is, I, I'm a person of color also, and so I respect what you said. Um to, I'll debate George Gascon anytime, uh anywhere. I've said that before. Um I think him coming and speaking is important, and he has his own viewpoints and I respect that. I may disagree with them, but I still respect them. Um and I respect your comments too, and I think we can have some common ground. I think there definitely is some room for debate regarding what are the reasons why crime has increased. Um I, I would just say this, if, if the DA is not prosecuting crime. Then the DA's not doing his job, because that's his job. And so I just have, I have a big disagreement with that. But I do respect um those, the statements you have, and I think there are some um areas where we can come to a common ground or a middle ground.
Thank you.
That is, uh last week I got a call uh from a person who was being summoned to a uh order parole hearings. This particular person, a woman, was viciously raped repeatedly. By individuals who went on and committed other rapes. And she was distressed because she'd been called in and she was told that the district attorney would not be present at the hearing. So she's simply not gonna go. And a very danger, dangerous individual may be released. I hope the Board of Prison Terms sees through that. But not having the District Attorney's Office there is an abandonment of responsibility.
Sad, it's, it's, I, I handle um child cases and before that. Um I handled child sexual abuse and child physical abuse. I've handled domestic violence, I've handled elder abuse. I've handled hate crimes, and these are very, very vulnerable victims. And if, if they've already been victimized and they already don't trust the system. And so then if you say as a DA, I'm not going to stand with you, I'm not gonna stand by you. I'm not gonna fight for you. Um what is that message to the community? What is that message to Palmdale? What is that message to individuals who feel that when they're sexually abused? That the system is so difficult that they don't get justice, and then they don't have a DA who's standing with them? Who's gonna fight for them? Um that's horrendous. Um that, that. I have a big, people ask me, why did you come forward? I mean, you're, you're risking your job, you're risking all of this. That's it. Um these are the cases that I handle and, and. If somebody says to me, you can't go into court and fight for a child. Who was tortured and abused because the DA has a blanket policy against it. I, I just don't believe in that. Um I, I didn't give seven years in the army and fifteen years as a DA to just abandon what I believe in. And I think most people, wherever you come from, have to show some empathy for individuals who are victimized. Because they don't feel the system works for them. And, and that's just a breakdown in the system. That, that's our job as prosecutors. And I can tell you here, I'm from Harris, somebody I haven't seen in years, who, who um. Taught me how to be a good prosecutor, who is a defense attorney, who fought like heck. For his clients, and I'm gonna tell you, big time, but he understands it's an adversarial system. And it doesn't mean we're fighting one another. It just means there's a judge, there's a prosecutor, and there's a defense attorney. And the defense attorney is fighting their butt off for that client, and I'm proud of that. My job is to stand up for the Constitution, but also fight for the victim and for the people. And we have a DA telling me that I can't do that, and I have a problem with that.
Barbara Benton Court, did you um have any questions for uh Mister Tommy?
No, sir, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Tanya?
Good evening, sir. Uh Mister Mayor, uh council members, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. Um and anytime I can have an opportunity to speak up for victims of crime, I will do so. I will go anywhere, I will travel anywhere. Because that's, that's who I am. And before I get started, I do wanna make it clear that I am a woman, that I am a woman of color. And that I, I am a victim and I'm also a law enforcement officer. I have the whole gamut. I've seen it from all different directions uh as to what we're dealing with here. Not only that, but I came from a home, a very poor home, where there was domestic violence, where there was child abuse. And I could have made myself a victim of those circumstances in my home. But, you know, I think that we all have opportunities and it's really a decision that we make. As to what type of an individual we're gonna be, if we're gonna be uh someone who's productive and who does someone good with their li- something good with their lives. And you stand up for people or you take the low road and you commit crimes. I am tired of. People thinking that these criminals are victims. They are not victims, they are criminals. Everything they have done and the reason why they, they are in jail or in prison is because of their own choices. Every morning when we get up, we have a choice to either do good or do bad. The individual who murdered my husband. And let me back up, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself correctly. My name is Tanya Owen. And I am the widow of Sergeant Steve Owen, who was executed in the line of duty on October fifth, twenty sixteen. I'm also a thirty-two-year veteran of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, a proud member of law enforcement. And you know, I consider those in uniform my brothers and sisters, and I can tell you that my brothers and sisters in uniform are made up of people. Are made up of people of different colors, of different races, of different eth- ethnicities. And we all stand for, for the same thing, and that is to stand and do the right thing for people, to be a blessing to people. To stand and ultimately to stand between good and evil. Mister Loa, you and I have a history. We have a professional history that goes way back many years. You and I have worked cases together. Mister Harris, you and I also have a history. We've worked many cases together, and Mister Loa, you know I'm a legit individual. I'm a good investigator, and anything I say is, is uh, I, I'm, I'm very forward and I'm very honest.
Your word is your bond.
Thank you, sir.
And the clients that I've represented, when we've dealt with each other.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Fair and honest.
Thank you, sir. And so my role here is to encourage you, council members and mayor, Mister Correa. And also to implore you to please, when you vote, that you vote for a vote of no confidence. For the District Attorney of Los Angeles County. October fifth, twenty sixteen, my husband was working as a field supervisor in the city of Lancaster. A nine-one-one call came into the station wherein a woman called and said that she was there with her son and someone had broken into her home. He was downstairs, they were completely scared out of their mind cuz they didn't know what this individual was gonna do. My husband happened to be the first officer um driving to the scene. I have no doubt that the individual who murdered him heard the sirens. The very first time my husband saw him, he saw the individual in the, jumping over the wall and going into an apartment complex. He put on uh a broadcast indicating that he had, that he had seen the, the suspect and that he was going to be detaining him at gunpoint. After that radio transmission, exactly nine seconds later, our dispatcher asked him what his um, what his um. His status was. There was no response. It was that quick and it only took seconds for the individual who happened to be a, a violent felon. Who had just been recently released from prison and was on parole for robbery. Who was a third striker, who uh had a gun in his possession that was stolen out of a burglary, who was a gang member. And um and a predator. This individual shot my husband, and he later called it during the investigation, his lucky shot. That shot hit my husband in the forehead, knocking him back, completely disabling him. This individual had the opportunity at that point to run, go a different direction and flee. But again, he made a choice. Life is about choices, ladies and gentlemen. He made the choice. To run up to my husband, stood over him and point-blank shot him three more times in the face. Another shot in the forehead, a shot in the eyeball, and a shot on his, in his cheek. He wanted to make sure that my husband was dead. Not only that, his fifth shot was directly at, directed at his badge. To me, as a law enforcement officer, he's clearly sending a message. And folks, those are the type of predators, those are the type of criminals that we have out there in society. That law enforcement stands between you and them, and now me as a retired person, between me and them. That individual began to search my husband for his weapon. His intent was to murder any additional responding deputies. When the first deputy arrived, he caught him, he caught the suspect or saw the suspect directly over my husband. Immediately after that, a gun battle took place. There was a, a exchange of gunfire. The suspect jumped into, into, to the police vehicle, put it in reverse and attempted to flee. But luckily, there was a law enforcement officer who put his life on the line and. Uh stopped this individual from leaving the apartment complex. The suspect left, jumped over the wall, went into the community. Found a home where a sliding glass door was open. He went inside and two teenagers who happened to be in there were taken hostage. Now this individual was, was holding, we later learned in the investigation, was holding these two teenagers at gunpoint, excuse me, at knife point. During that time, in his attempt to still escape, he changed his clothes. And as he exited, uh luckily, our law enforcement officers were there to capture him because it was very clear to me and it was very clear to them. That he was a, a, a danger to everyone in the community. And those are the people your law enforcement officers stand between. So off script, I'm gonna tell you this. Please, folks, defend the police, not defund the police. Because you know what, folks? Let's be careful, you know, what we wish for. What if one day you need law enforcement? Your wife is getting raped, you're being held at gunpoint, your child is being stabbed. And you call nine-one-one and no one picked up the phone. Because you know what? Law enforcement, everybody can talk negative about law enforcement because that's the rhetoric, rhetoric the media is uh giving to the, to society. But here's the thing, when trouble is facing us, when danger is in front of us, who do we call? It's law enforcement. So we need to defend them. Back to my case. The individual was taken into custody. At that time, during that administration, the individual was charged with the murder of a police officer. The special circumstances were the murder of, of a police officer in the performance of his duty, the murder of a police officer. Uh while attempting to escape. And he was ad charged or um charged with all of the allegations. Uh involving the gun enhancement, uh gang enhancement, the third striker, and all those different enhancements. Uh that were, were properly charged. This, come December seventh of last year, when Mister Gascon is sworn into office. That very day, he tweeted and he said, any case currently on track for the death penalty. Is to be stopped and the death penalty will no longer be pursued. That directly affected me. Because the individual that murdered my husband, and let me be, be very clear. The race of the person that murdered my husband is of no consequence to me. I really don't care what his race is. What I do care about are his actions. That day, Mister Gascon turned the justice system upside down. By giving his edicts, his directives to his district attorneys, telling them that. Uh to remove all these enhancements, that they were not gonna be followed, that everything was going to be treated uh, uh, you know. As a blanket case, that nothing was going to be uh considered by the uh district attorneys. In fact, he took away the discretion that the deputy district attorneys have to either um. Re, um up, to either uh charge the case or remove charges. And so we went on that very day from pursuing the death penalty on this individual. To literally only charging him with a single uh ca- uh, single count of murder. Which at the end of the day, had we, had this been successful, he would have only been looking at twelve years in prison. And he's already served five. So in seven years, he'd be walking the streets again, to murder again. But let me be very clear, as a law enforcement officer, the things that we see out in the street when we respond to calls of depravity of society. The things that we see, I don't know how many people would be able to handle that. And let me tell you something, yes, we have emotions, we do have a heart, we are human beings, and we do take this home. The cases that I worked when I was a child abuse investigator, yes, I took those home. And did they affect my marriage? Absolutely. And law enforcement officers, we're human beings just like anyone else is, even though people wanna dehumanize us, they wanna uh. Uh make us look like we're robots, we're not. We are just like everyone else. We have families. We have divorce in our families, we have suicide in our families, we have problems just like with anyone else, we bleed just like anyone else. The only difference between law enforcement and those who, who are out there. Is that we don't, we put on a badge and we put on a, a gun belt and we go out there and, and try to uphold the law. That's the only difference. So, please, I implore you um to vote, uh, uh. Uh to give a vote of no confidence against Mister Ga- Gascon. And let me just leave you with this. Here's the thing. Um we talk about reform, could we uh, you know, use reform? Absolutely. Uh, uh, the other is um. Rehabilitation, do I believe in that? Of course, you know? Um but what we're talking about is these criminals that Mister Gascon is letting out of prison that have no business being out. You know, these child molesters, cop killers, uh brutal uh individuals who may be dormant for a while. But after a while, but after being out sometime, they're gonna strike again. And who's gonna be next? Ladies and gentlemen, don't wait to become a victim to stand up for, for other victims, okay? And I'm gonna leave you with this. The council members, Mister uh Correa. Who is the person, think about this, and even the audience members, who is the person that you love the most? Who are the persons who you love the most? And if they were victimized, if they were murdered, if they were stabbed, if they were tortured. What is it that we all want at the end of the day? I think we all want, we can agree that what we want is justice. And we want the individual to be held accountable to the full extent of the law for his or her actions. And that's all we're asking today. This is not a partisan uh effort. This has nothing to do with politics. This has nothing to do with black, white, brown. It just has to do with basic human rights of people that are victimized. And we need a DA who is going to do that. He needs to do his job and he needs to stand up for victims. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If, before she, does anybody have any questions for uh Ms. Owens?
I just wanted to.
I, I just wanna say something. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Um I just wanna thank her for coming. Um Tanya, you are now and you always have been, at least to me. Been a huge inspiration uh for women in law enforcement. I'm so proud of what you're doing now. And for what you've been through, the things that you are doing to make the world a better place are just invaluable, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Tanya, I wanted to say, um, and I'm glad you came back up. I knew Steve, and we had, we had similar situations, uh you know, where he was a witness for the, for the people. But I believe that in my experience, I never knew any deputy or sergeant. Who tried to breach those young people who were committing offenses. And trying to do something to get out of that situation and become useful and productive. It was such a tragic day when this happened to him. And I have no doubt. I don't know anything about the individual who killed your husband, but individuals like that. And perhaps this one, and I don't know, start out with petty crimes, they start out with misdemeanors. And because the system is just sort of a turntable, people come in, processed, out again. And is now, in my estimation, worse under this administration of this district attorney. And it starts out that way. You don't go from zero to murder, except in very small percentage of the cases. It starts out with misdemeanors, it maybe is a um, you know, stealing a car. Or committing some kind of a robbery, you know, a, an Estes robbery. or committing some kind of a robbery, you know, a, an Estes robbery, basically pushing somebody and taking something from them, and escalating right up to the murder charge. And as Mr.-
That's correct.
As Mr. Hatami has just said, you know, murders in Los Angeles County are spiking, that means dead people. Good, honest, human beings going about their business. Or even hu, other human beings that perhaps were involved in gangs. Yet, they are the children of some mother and father. And they're murdered. And all I wanted to say to you, Tanya, and I'm so glad I get to say this to you again, was that Steve was a very honorable human being.
Thank you.
And it was such a tragedy that he was taken away from us. And I'm sure Alvin would agree with me back there. He knew Steve also. All of us in the defense side really respected Steve. And it was such a tragedy, such a good law enforcement person would lose their life like that.
Well, thank you so much, I appre, I appreciate you saying that. And you know, it's interesting because when we gave our victim impact statement when the case was adjudicated, and I do wanna give the, the murderer credit. He had more compassion for my family, the murderer, had more compassion for my family than Mr. Gascon has, has had. Remember, he could have gone to trial and fought this, and he would have gotten a lot less, I'm, I have no doubt. However, he offered life without parole, he agreed to die in prison. He did. So I thanked him for that, and when I gave my victim impact statement, I let, let him know that I had forgiven him. It did take me a while, cuz I didn't know how God was gonna get me to that place to forgive, of forgiveness. I struggled with it, I'll be honest with you, it was a everyday struggle. I prayed that he would get me to that place. But in my heart, I never felt that it, he, he could, and he finally did. It took over two years for me to, to get to that place of forgiveness. And I did tell him when I gave my victim impact statement that my prayer for him was that he would rekindle his, his relationship with God and that he would go out in the yard and witness to others and bring them to God. And his family and I are good friends. I love his mom, his sister, his niece, you know, and, um, they're good people, they didn't pull the trigger. And so, you know, um, at the end of the day, it was really a, a, a good thing because honestly, it's just, um, glorifying God. To show that, you know, we can forgive others and that we can, we can continue and we can, we don't have to hate. There's enough hate in this world. But nevertheless, there still has to be accountability for one's actions. And that's all we're looking for.
I really respect what you just said.
Thank you, sir.
Forgiveness.
Thank you.
Mr. Correio, do you have any comments or questions on it?
I, uh, I'm really excited to, to hear this story, I, I'm really sorry for what happened, I I know what the newspapers, um, say about that tragedy. Um, I, I do feel your pain and I, I, I know why, um, we want justice to be done, and we, so do I, so do all of us. Uh, we all want justice to be served for those, uh, for us. Those that take the lives of, uh, people that we love. Um, and, and there is no, no excuse for that. Uh, I, I really feel what you're saying, and I fully understand where this issue is coming from. Um, I'm really sorry to, to hear what happened and the way that it happened. And, and I thank you for your service too.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I, I do know what you've done, um, I had no idea that you were also a law enforcement, um, officer. Um, thank you for sharing that story with us, with, with everybody. I know it took a lot of courage for you to do that. Um, thank you for doing that, I have nothing else to say to you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Bishop?
Uh, yeah, that was, I think, like, the second time I've heard the story. Um, I, we also got to hear you, uh, talk about that at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, yeah, it's still just as emotional the second time hearing it as the first time and, and knowing that, you know, stuff like that happens there in our community is just heartbreaking. But I'm, I'm very grateful that you've done everything you can to try to make our, s, our community and our valley a better place and that you, uh, found a chance to forgive him and move on and, and still continue your work to, to benefit everyone on, in this community. I know how hard that is for you to come up here and do that, and I saw you do it at this Hispanic Chamber, and so we're here and we support you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, and, and after, you know, uh, you and I have talked a couple of times in the past, but, um, being able to, um, in our, in our current, um, scenario that we're facing and with the topic that we had uh, on the agenda tonight with the, uh, city attorney to, uh, take over at least a portion of these things, I thought it was critically important for, uh, someone to, uh, uh, like yourself, to kind of address us from the, um, from the, the impact that victims, um, from many of these, uh, lifelong career criminals that start out shoplifting, shop, you know, trespassing, uh, doing all these things, and if we, there's a lack of accountability upfront, where do we end up? So I thought it was important, and that's why I asked you to come here, and I thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, sir, thank you, council members, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Okay, so the, um, the actual item that we're here to discuss, and I, again, I just, um, I, I thank, um, Mr. Hatami and, uh, Tanya Owens for being here to kind of put, uh, put a, put a face and a perspective on some of these things. And I think we all know people that, on both sides, that have been, uh, 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 had, um, justice, uh, encounters, uh, and, uh, uh, positive and negative. But I think right now, uh, the, the real issue is, is that, um, uh, we're, we're facing real problems with repetitive criminal activities, uh, lack of resources for shop owners and homeowners to keep, uh, people a, a, away from them. Uh, and, uh, and for many of these items that the city attorney listed on his list here. And, uh, I for one would, uh, like to, uh, see the city attorney continue to take on, uh, and it's not all gonna happen overnight because he only has a certain amount of staff. And there are cases that are currently pending. But, uh, uh, I think that we owe it to our community, uh, to, uh, to make sure that, uh, uh, cases are handled and handled fairly and equitably and that the, uh, and that the, um, and that the victims are kept in, in, under consideration here. So I'd, I'd like to entertain a motion to have the city attorney take on these additional, uh-
Well, if I could, what we would do is, uh, we would bring it back at the next meeting with a full report, budget impact. Um, so the direction would be to direct staff to bring it back, and that'll be the first step in to waiting in those waters at that meeting, and then a definitive vote can be taken. Uh, cuz there'll be a few actions that need to take place in order for that to happen.
I, I think that-
Just directing staff to provide further information and then-
Yeah, these are, the, 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 the list that you go down is the list of quality of life problems and when, when I, when I'm sitting there talking to the deputies, uh, and they're telling me that they can't even get, uh, uh, a, a career felon, that they pull over, that, and what should have been a relatively minor traffic stop, and the guy is sitting on a gun that's unregistered, but high capacity magazine, some would call it a normal capacity magazine. And a blue slip comes over and says, "And we can't prove that he knew it was there." It was between his diggies and a seat cushion. And that's the kind of stuff that these guys are kicking back. So I, I don't hold, if we can't get something like that adequately managed by the DA, how are we gonna protect families? How, how do you, how do you stop people from just taking everything out of your garage tomorrow? You know, uh, how do you stop the, um, the, the person assaulting the shop owner and he, uh, didn't, uh, break a bone, give a concussion, or cause a loss of an organ? The guy just gets a, a misdemeanor, that's, that's a bunch of malarkey. So we need to have the, I, so is there any, uh-
Well, there's, there's a request, and I don't know whether, I'm gonna put, uh, the captain on the hot spot, but, um, I, I received, uh, and have talked to numerous, uh, deputy DAs, and, uh, they're very frustrated. Uh, I got, uh, an email tonight that is rather lengthy, but I think it reflects, uh, the sense of, of deputy district attorneys of their frustration. What is the impact on the sheriff's department and deputies in, in, in your captaincy here in this, uh, for the city of Palmdale with the, uh, uh, with the directives of the district attorney here in, in LA County? And I know you have to be cautious, but what's the, uh, real impact that's happening with the deputies here?
Well, what you can be proud of is the deputies that you have here at Palmdale are hardworking deputies. So they're out there, if the call comes in, they respond to the call, they handle it appropriately. They don't give consideration to what's gonna be filed or not filed. They continue to do the work. So if that means you make an arrest, bring somebody to the station jail and book them, you do so. And, and that's what they're doing, they are very hardworking deputies. Our detectives, they're putting the hard work in compiling the case, filing the case, presenting it to the filing DA, and then coming back with the information. What it usually means is the workload increases because you're back out there, uh, re-contacting, re-arresting the same individual multiple times. With Prop forty-seven, uh, we've got records of people being arrested forty, fifty, sixty times in a relatively short period of time. Versus if they were put into custody, there are a lot of great programs. I, I was working custody at the time of, uh, Prop forty-seven being passed. We had programs in place that the idea was not to warehouse people in jail. You have counseling programs, you have, uh, uh, drug dependency programs. If you're in there for domestic violence, there's anger management. Uh, many, many other things, job skills, life skills, um, how to get homes and, and things like that. Prop forty-seven came through and it just wiped the deck, literally, two thousand people out of our custody within a matter of a month. They got the mindset of, eh, I'll just sit here, I'll wait for my time to be called, I'm back out on the street. And, and that's kind of what we have now, we're managing with tickets.
How, how is this impacting, uh, deputies that are out there, as you say, uh, making arrests on these crimes?
They, they are committed to working, they will work. They are answering the calls for service, they are dedicated to that cause, they are dedicated to public safety.
So they're keeping their morale up, uh, despite their cases not being fought?
Absolutely.
Right.
Well, it's gotta be somewhat demoralizing, you see case after case after case, getting that blue slip after blue slip after blue slip on those.
As you mentioned, the statistics, they represent people. And they are concerned about the people. And they are concerned about public safety in this community, so they know they're on the front line. They're the, they're the difference between good and evil, and they're continuing to work. We need to give them the tools to be more efficient.
Well, when you go in from thirteen percent rejections to fifty-nine percent rejections, uh, again, e- every one of those represents a victim out there that, uh, that, that guy, and, you know.
We still have great programs in custody. If they would stay for simply two weeks, a month, six months, gives time to give them some counseling, uh, turn their life into a new direction.
Hey?
I, well, I wanna thank you, uh, thank the sheriff's department for all the hard work they do, I know you guys have been busy and even overwhelmed, uh, this time of year with everything going on. But I just wanna say from the city standpoint, I think it's, as a charter city, I think it's a good idea, anytime we do anything or take action to take on a little bit more responsibility in our community and deal with the, the citizens and our people directly, uh, rather than the county or, uh, you know, sheriff's department or, you know, anyone in Los Angeles, cuz we're kind of our own city out here, and we kind of do things a little differently, we do them our way, and, and a lot of these violations and, and, and things on this list here, I can't help but feel that these are things that the younger generation might get in trouble for and, uh, more often than not, you know, the, the drinking in public and the loitering and, you know, resisting, I think that's all stuff that, that we might have a chance to deal with better here with our youth and, uh, see less of the repeat offense and the recidis, recidivism of that, so that's the way I look at this, if we deal with this vocally, these lower level crimes, we have an opportunity to stop that and stop that habitual process and maybe deal with these people at a local level. So I look at it like it could be an opportunity to reform some of this stuff. I'm hoping my counsel feels the same way.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, most welcome.
All right, um, any, any, anything else, Mr. Correio or, uh, Ms. Ben Court?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
No, I have nothing else, I just, uh, just listening, trying to handle all, all this information that keeps coming in. Uh, I lost, I lost some action for a, a couple of minutes. Did you open the public, uh, hearing for a public power or not yet?
No, we, we did. We, we had public comment. That's why, that's why I waited till the end of it to, to call up the, uh, the witnesses.
Okay.
Um, the, um, so what, what, what the question is before us is do we direct staff to bring this back at the next meeting? Um, um, with the appropriate language for the city attorney to begin bringing these items on?
I think the city attorney articulated that, uh, it could be brought next time, uh, with a, a study on, uh, the financial needs, the, uh, whatever needs to be put into place, uh, how many, uh, prosecuting attorneys we'd have to, uh, hire. Um, our relations with the-
Whatever the deal, but, yeah.
A relationship with the superior court to install a courtroom or perhaps, uh, you know, staffing for courts, uh, some office space at the courthouse. Uh, I've, I, I, and I don't know whether this is, uh, this is something we can do or not, but I know that we, uh, constructed two courtrooms here that, um, that are right outside uh, in, in front of the, uh, developmental services building.
Yeah, they've, they've sat, they've sat idle because of the corruption issues that went on.
Right, they sat idle and, and, uh, but yet there were, there were judges that were actually assigned to these courtrooms uh, at one point in time, uh, dealing with civil cases, I don't know why, perhaps we couldn't, uh-
I think there's some studies going on as far as potential utilization. So I think we take a look at that, I think that, I think all that's good, I think, I think that all that can, um, can be there, but until we tell him that that's a direction we want us to head-
That is, if we have to make a motion, I would so move.
Before, before you make that motion, uh-
Well, I just made the motion.
I won't, I, I need, well, not yet, I have some big thing. I think that we need to further study this, I think that we need to have a disability study because of the cost of what you have proposed. Uh, it seems that it's going to, uh, take a lot of resources. You're talking about a, uh, an office over at the court, uh, and then offices across the street and how many more, uh, attorneys are we going to need? I don't think that it's just as simple as let's do this. Uh, it is going to really impact our budget. We just passed a budget, what, last month? And now I, what I hear is that you're looking to enhance and empower our city attorney with all of the further resources that are going to be costly.
You were here incorrectly, Mr. Correio, what I said is that the city attorney will bring back information on the logistics, the cost, the number of city attorneys that it may take. I'm not saying that we're going to do it, I'm saying that this information should be brought forth so we can study it.
I, I, yes, I, I heard what you said. But I'm talking about a disability study. I'm not talking about the, the city attorney, Mr. Beck, bringing us that information. Because it, it seems like he's gonna take a lot of resources. I don't think that, uh, our city attorney has the time to do all of this assessment within thirty-eight, within our next council meeting. I, I don't think it's that simple. And again, this is going to, it impacts our budget, we, we just approved. So where do we take the money from on the programs that we are proving the budget? How many, how many, he could tell us how many attorneys, but it's not gonna be one.
Right, so I think that, I think that's why we asked him to, to bring back because I, I think it's rec, I think it's recognized that this is gonna be an incremental approach uh, to, to this process, and that's, that's what I would investigate.
So we said, oh, when you're sending it back, are you, are you giving him, asking for council directions to have the city attorney reading back next month?
Well, we can at least begin.
Yep.
Um, start that, at least analyze it, I know that-
I think we definitely need a, a full study. As, as much information as possible because it is a huge, uh, piece of the pie to take on, so to speak, that is, is that a lot of work, Mr. Beck?
And, and the other thing too, uh, think about what we've talked about in previous council meetings. We've always said that the county does not provide us with the services that we need. Obviously, this is one of the purposes that we need by all this, uh, elimination of these programs that the deputy, uh, district attorney mentioned. So in a way, we are saying, okay, county, don't, don't provide us with the services that we need anymore. We'll just create department in the city of Palmdale to service our residents. Well, again, it's gonna impact the budget a lot. And we're sending the message to the county that if you don't give us the services, we'll tear down the department and we'll be self-sufficient. Which I don't think that's fair either on the side of, of our residents. We don't pay taxes, they go down to LA, and we always say that. So I, I don't think that it's as simple as just, you know, bring it back and let's start with it without really thinking about what- Without really thinking about what the real cost is. And bring it back in thirty-eight to start? I mean, that, that doesn't seem that the right approach to me.
But we, we got, we got, we got the county doesn't provide us with library services. And we chose, we decided that that was, uh, an important item. County doesn't provide us with senior services down here. We operate our own senior center right here. Um, I think that the, the county is, uh, is kind of abdicating, uh, uh, this responsibility. And I think unless, uh, uh, and until we ask the city attorney to, uh, bring us back some additional data so we can, and again, I don't, I wouldn't expect that on, uh, uh, the, the second week of August, that, uh, suddenly he's gonna, uh, be taking over every misdemeanor prosecution over in the, uh, uh, Antelope Valley Courthouse. But I would anticipate that we would start looking at the ones that are having the greatest impact on our residents and on our merchants and things of that nature. And, um, and I'm sure that he will give us a full report on what that will un- ultimately end up entailing. But I don't, I don't have any, uh, any trust that the DA's office is gonna do that. And all the kicking and screaming that we want to do isn't gonna change anything.
There's a very important cost that's being ignored here and that's the cost that this, it, these lack of prosecutions is having on the residents. People who are being impacted by these offenses, even though they're just misdemeanors. But they're impacting people. They're getting things stolen from them. They're getting, uh, assaulted, even, uh, uh, the, the, having someone loitering in, in, at a restaurant, uh, that they can't do anything about because the individual's intoxicated and they can't remove them from there. These are social costs. And they're actually financial costs to, uh, these merchants and to the people that this is happening to. All we're asking for is, uh, to provide direction to the city attorney to start looking at the logistics of this, what the cost is, what the number of city attorneys it might take. It's just a study. It's not saying that we're going to do it. It's just to determine whether we should do it. And whether we have the resources to do it.
So, uh, so I, I, I- I will second that, your motion, Mr. Law.
Well, if I could just clarify for a few things, even if we brought it back next week, the government code allows that, well, as it provided, the district attorney is responsible for all prosecutions within the county, right? The two ways that a city, especially a charter city, could take over prosecutions is either the district's attorney consents to it or there's a charter amendment. So nothing's happening next week, but I do echo the seven. All I could bring back would be a very preliminary representation of staff needed. A full feasibility report would give you a more definitive number of what the budget impact would be and whether or not the budget could carry something to that effect.
Yeah, it's amazing how much money we spend on all kinds of consults, uh, consultants. Vast amount of money. And if we invested some money in this area, I know that, that you would probably be overworked, but perhaps we can retain consultants that can study the situation and explore it and investigate it for us. So we can get something that's complimentary and something that we can actually do. We spend all kinds of money on all kinds of consultants, millions of dollars.
I'm gonna agree with that, uh, Mr. Law. I wanna agree with that. I, I don't think that it's fair for Mr. Beck to take on this big task. If Mr. Beck can start looking at, uh, feasibility study consultants that are professionals in this area, then we can start looking at a budget to do this feasibility study. If we have Mr. Beck to overtake on this task, he's gonna have to not do the day-to-day things that we're doing right now. And we are very busy.
Well, that's why we just gave that again.
I would, I would, I would support your motion. If we can amend it to say that Mr. Beck is gonna start looking at consultants that can do a feasibility study and bring us a budget for that to do.
I, I think that my motion is, my motion is to have Mr. Beck begin the preliminary search for the logistics, for the cost.
Bring us back the information.
And bring them back the information. And then if we need to have a, um, greater, more in-depth uh, look at this, then we should consider, um, hiring consultants that could, that could help us, that could help us in this regard.
Yes, you know, the other thing is that we just got done doing-
Not many, sorry, I'm off here with that. We need to add a question, yes.
Yeah, we just got done doing a huge survey of our people up here. And the number one overwhelmingly, number one item that everyone wanted us to pay better attention to has been public safety. So.
Absolutely.
So just to clarify, I'll bring back, we'll describe the process, preliminary staffing requirements in a very, very preliminary financial. Okay.
But perhaps-
Tell us what, tell us what's involved and what might be needed.
Right, and, and-
Alright, so city clerk, can you, uh, call the, uh, call for that vote on that, that motion, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Bencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawthorne?
Yes. At the same time, I would like to ask that as, um, part of this process, that it's, um, it's becoming increasingly uh, evident that we cannot depend on the DA to be, um, moving forward with this. So I'd like to ask that we bring back a resolution and we consider a resolution of no confidence at the next, uh, at the next, uh, council meeting. So I'll make that a motion.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
That will only, that will only be a moral support to what is going on. I don't think that you have any teeth on what the real issues are. If you guys wanna go ahead and ask, I bring a motion, I mean, a vote of no confidence. Be realistic. That is not gonna change the real issues that we're talking about tonight. All of the, um, things that the, the speaker said, I don't think that they want a moral support, uh, resolution of a vote of no confidence. That is not gonna be anything.
Oh, you have to give us both no on this.
There is movement for a recall, yeah. There is a movement for a recall, let it go through the processes. That's what is desired by, by the voters. If we need to vote again, that is what, uh, we will make a difference. Now this vote of no confidence, because whatever his policies are, are not gonna change. So I think that the real issue here needs to be addressed by the voters. If they wanna proceed with that issue and, and with that movement of getting a recall, that will be the voters who will decide. Not a, not a, a vote of no confidence will do anything. If my spouse or child was murdered, a vote of no confidence doesn't do anything to me. Think about that. Like, if that's what you wanna do.
I think, I think the, the issue is showing our residents that, um, that we have, we have a very serious concern above and beyond the misdemeanor issues that the city attorney is gonna be looking at here. Uh, and that, uh, uh, again, uh, uh, none, none of us, nobody in this room's ever had the opportunity to talk with the guy. He doesn't come out, he doesn't address any of this. Uh, and he's, uh, letting, you know, look, we all can agree that there's reforms needed. But at the same time, uh, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. So you got a motion and a second on that. Uh, any other comment or would, uh, to, bring that, to bring that back at the next meeting? Okay.
Can, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say that although it, it really doesn't have teeth and the Gascon recall is already, um, has begun, so you can always find um, somewhere to put your, your voice in there. Um, but I think as a council, the public often looks to us to see where we stand on, on the issues. And to, to be leaders for people that maybe are wavering one way or the other. So um, for us as a council to take a stand one way or the other and show that we really do support our prime victims, I, I think is a very important role for us to take.
Thank you very much. City clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
No.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Okay, so we'll bring that back and we'll bring that back for formal vote on a resolution at the next meeting. Okay, we've hit the bewitching hour. We're gonna take a short break. And we'll be back in here in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me, council member, for you?
I can hear you, yes, I think I'm back home soon.
Okay, just wanted to, just wanted to make sure.
I know. IT, can we check and make sure that, that our remote members are available? Thank you.
Councilwoman Ben Court, can you hear us?
I can hear ya.
Okay, perfect. Make sure they weren't out getting some Doritos or something. That's the advantage when you're... Okay. So we all good? City clerk, can we go back on the record, please? So, um... Let me go back here, make sure. So, item number thirteen, consent calendar, all items on a consent calendar will be enacted by one motion unless a council member desires to pull an item. Uh, item, uh, items thirteen-one through item thirteen-point-one-six, many of them are re- sort of redundant because they're, they're kind of follow, follow-ups on some of these engineering reports and, uh, things like that. Uh, do I have any items to pull or a motion to approve?
I can pull thirteen-twelve.
Thirteen what, sir?
Twelve.
Thirteen-twelve?
Yes.
Okay. Thirteen-point-seven? Mr. Bishop, you good?
I'm good. I'll, uh, make a motion for the remaining balance of the consent calendar.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Ben Court, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, okay. Alright, so the, uh, motion is to approve the consent calendar exception of thirteen-seven and thirteen-twelve. Uh, city clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thirteen-seven, uh, Mr. Loa had a question he'd like some clarification on, uh...
Well, I mean, we're completely, uh, we've got the code, conflict of interest code, from what I understand, uh, we're just taking the model...
Conflict of interest.
Can you put the mic on?
Oh, Mike, yeah, it's on.
Yeah, can, you can hear me.
So who's, uh, reporting on this, or who?
Who's the staff reporting this?
City attorney.
Oh, city, city...
Okay, there we go.
City attorney.
Alright, there we go. Right, so my understanding is that we have, so, well, here, let me go back. The Political Reform Act of seventy-four requires that we adopt a conflict of interest code, and we've adopted what is, uh, two California code resolution, section eighteen-seven-thirty, which is ostensibly what you have here. What this includes is an update to that, to our integration with that code for both new positions that we've acquired, changes in titles and eliminated positions. So it's a, an update, I think is the best way to say it.
Okay, so basically, we're supplanting our existing conflict of interest code with the model code of California?
We have that code, we're just updating it with the new positions.
That, that's the only difference.
Those are the changes, right.
Okay. Alright, so then I move to, I move to approve it.
Sorry, okay. I'll go ahead and second it.
I have a motion and a second, city clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so thirteen... I think when we get too many mics on it, starts kicking people off. Um, thirteen-twelve, uh, Lynn? Want to give us the, uh... Tell us what this is, and then, um, then maybe there's a question.
I know what it is, I really don't need a staff report or anything like that, I just, uh, wanted to pull this item because on page two of the staff report, uh, it talks about the selection criteria. And I just want to make sure that the entire city is, uh, considered by the consultant. Uh, bullet number two on the bottom of page two on the staff report, site analysis and selection, analyze potential sites for the regional recreation complex, and provide three site selection recommendations. Uh, the reason I, I bring that up is because I read the article on paper, and it seemed like, uh, there was a, a, a section of that article that kind of, uh, indicated that the best location for this, uh, center is by ten Street West and Sierra Highway, uh, along Rancho Vista. And as you know, I'm always, uh, trying to find equal facilities throughout the city. Now that we have Best of the West on the west side of the freeway, I just want to make sure that the consultant looks at the entire city and not just on the area that was, uh, suggested in the article on paper. I think that, uh, we need to have that looked at carefully. Um, I know the intention is to bring this recreational facility like the one that we looked at at Hoss, Mayor, you and I went on that, uh, trip. It's an amazing facility. And I am not very familiar with Hoss, uh, it's just the time that we were there. But it was not, it was located in a section of the city that is not very highly populated. I know the intent is to make it a regional center. I know there is an MOU with the city of Lancaster, uh, about creating this facility, and Lancaster will create another facility. But I just want to make sure that the consultant knows that the entire city is to be looked at. Uh, because I think that we need some, something like Best of the West, uh, on the other side of the city. That's the reason I brought this up.
Okay.
All sound with me?
Um, I can assure you that the consultant will look at throughout the city for this. So, and that's why we, we went up with three, three options, different areas of the city that can be looked at. Um, but yes, I can assure you that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The initial intent here is to, uh, build a center that is regional and is going to serve, uh, our entire region, including the city of Palmdale, city of Lancaster, and outlying areas, Squirtz Hill, Little Rock, Lake Aliso.
That was, that was, uh, um, we don't con, we don't control how the press interprets our commentary there. And you guys were on the line, uh, when we were having that, some of you were on the line when I was having that discussion. And, uh, the, um, um, when, um, when the question was raised, I said, "Well, we've got to keep it under consideration, uh, but as unlike, uh, the water park and, uh, things like that, that, that had, uh, uh, the, the, the bond mandated that it had to be over in certain parts of town and things of that nature." Um, that this is cooperative between the cities and that, and I don't know where Rancho Vista even came from, but I just, my only comment, uh, was that we, um, uh, that it, it would seem to make sense that it be along a corridor that was easily accessible, uh, between both the cities. And, uh, and when I was asked, you know, "Where is that?", I said, "Well, you know, I don't know. Sierra Highway and ten Street West both run all the way from, you know, the mountains, uh, to, to Mojave." So, you know, uh, I would anticipate somewhere probably, uh, within shooting distance of the freeway, uh, to be honest with you. So I even suggested, uh, you know, that, uh, there may be other areas that might come up that, uh, would have, uh, be more cost-effective, uh, down towards the southern end of the valley and stuff. But, uh, just like the, uh, the, uh, um, uh, the, the conference center, that's going to be right off the freeway at the fairgrounds, you know, so... But, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I fully anticipate that we'll be looking at, uh, a variety and that, uh, that, uh, you're gonna be driving us, these guys all around town.
Yes, we are.
So everything, so... Okay.
Thank you.
Move to approve this one.
Okay, I had, uh, Mr. Loa and made a motion, is that a second, Mr. Carrillo?
No, that was the first, but that's okay, I can...
Okay, alright. So I have a motion and a second, uh, on this item, city clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yeah.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Item number fourteen, uh, city clerk?
Yes, uh, mayor and members of council. Uh, the terms of the current mobile home rental review, uh, board member for Ms. Joan Ferry Scott, as well as Deborah McLaren, both expired on June thirtieth. Um, both members have expressed an interest for reappointment, and that information was provided to mayor. Mayor, um, has agreed to bring forward the nominations for their reappointment. In addition, there was also one more position, uh, that is vacant due to a resignation. And, uh, due to that, we had to go off for recruitment for, um, an additional position. So that's three positions that need to be, um, reappointed, as well as one that needs to be appointed. We went out for, uh, recruitment, and we received a total of six applications. Each application was reviewed by mayor, and, um, as a result of that review and and mayor's nomination for Edward Di Santiago, uh, we're bringing this forward to council for ratification for both reappointments as well as the vacancy. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion?
Move to approve the reappointment. Reappointments and appointment to fill vacancy on the mobile home park rental review board. I second it.
I have a motion and by Mr. Loa, second by, uh, Mr. Carrillo. Any additional comment or call for a question?
Mayor Pro Tim Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
City clerk, we're up again, we're starting tonight.
Yes, item fourteen-point-two is a reappointment of the public member to the city of Palmdale Audit Committee. Um, Ms. Christine Gary filled in for a position that had been vacated by an existing, um, audit committee member. Ms. Gary, Ms. Gary did attend the January Audit Committee meeting in January of this year, and she completed the, um, the term. At the close of the term, uh, mayor did ask for me to contact Ms. Gary and find out if she's still interested, um, in moving forward in that capacity. She did express her interest. Um, so we're bringing forward to you mayor's nomination for Ms. Christine Gary to be appointed for a full term for two years to the audit committee. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from the council? Or a motion?
Move to approve fourteen-point-two, approve the appointment of the public member of the city of Palmdale Audit Committee.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Call for a question.
Mayor Pro Tim Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
So, sixteen-one, uh... Senior Planner, Benjamin Fiss. Aren't you happy that you pulled this one?
Good evening, mayor, and mayor Pro Tim and members of the council. You should have the, uh, presentation before you in your packet for zoning ordinance amendment twenty-one-zero-zero-two, adopt ordinance number fifteen-sixty-five, approving zoning ordinance amendment twenty-one-zero-zero-two, amending sections seventeen-point-one-six definitions, seventeen-point-two-six-point-zero-four-zero, minor modifications of approved plans, seventeen-point-ninety-five-zero-four-zero communication facilities, seventeen-point-ninety-five-zero-five wireless telecommunications facilities in public right-of-way, and to add section seventeen-point-ninety-five-zero-six-zero, emergency standby generators uh, of the Palmdale municipal code, title seventeen, zoning code, to update the standards for the permitting, development, siting, installation, aesthetics, design, operation, and maintenance of wired tele, wireless telecommunications facilities.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm, it actually continued.
Oh, okay.
And to provide for the installation of emergency standby generators in compliance with state and federal requirements.
I'm sorry, went and handed that off and lost track of where you were at on there. So, we, what we need at this point, uh, is we need an, uh, we need a motion to introduce ordinance number sixteen-fifty-five. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Bishop, I need a second?
Second, city clerk?
Mr. Carrillo? City clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes. So now we have, may I have questions, so stand by. I will open the public hearing, we had taken testimony earlier from the, uh, one representative we have, the, the, we got on the call. Um, is there anybody else, do you have IT?
Not at this time, here.
City clerk?
No, mayor, not at this time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience that wanted to address this particular item sixteen-point-one? Telecommunication facilities? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
Need a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered? So we have, uh, any questions for, uh, our, uh, Mr. Senior Planner Benjamin Fiss here?
I, I, I have a, a question, but it's just actually related, related to the, uh, sci-fi that we adopted. Well, we authorized the, uh, city manager to negotiate with sci-fi to come up with, uh, uh, an agreement to, uh, install, uh, wireless throughout the entire city. And, and at the time- And, and at the time that this was discussed, uh, first on November seventeenth twenty twenty and then on December first twenty twenty. It was mentioned and, and we asked that uh, we get updates on uh how this is advancing. And I, I don't know whether this is connected or not, but it's, in my mind, it sounds like they're connected. Um, and uh for updates on what is happening with that negotiation. And uh addressing the principal concern that I think was brought up by several members of the council regarding the digital divide. And access to um, lower income individuals who do not have access to it, to the internet. Is there a connection here and if so, can you?
I think we're gonna bring Ben up because I think he's the designated expert on that.
Yeah, yeah, the, the other Ben.
The other Ben, okay. I wasn't confusing you, I know the difference.
Yeah, yeah, different Ben, but yeah, um, well, we're continuing our work with sci-fi. Uh, we're working with them and uh, we're planning the project out. Hopefully, uh, they'll break ground by the end of this year, excuse me, this calendar year. In terms of digital equity, uh, we're, I'm sorry.
So, my microphone's working, only when it likes to, just for the sake of the agenda, just really, if this, if that is related to this item, if not. We can do as direct staff to bring back a comprehensive update in the future as an agenda's item. So, if this does relate, we can discuss if it's too remote.
Yeah, this is related to wireless communication facilities, so even though they may connect to the sci-fi network, it really isn't related to sci-fi, so. Uh, we can come back with a report.
Let me ask it this way, does, does this zoning change um, improve the conditions for. Uh, the sci-fi agreement or the sci-fi installation?
Okay, if you want to, yeah, thank you. Uh, yes, tangentially.
Um, sci-fi is installing um fiber optic cable. Which is dependent on a wireless telecommunications facility system, network. So, the work that we've been doing on the zoning ordinance amendment. Will hopefully facilitate the installation of our wireless telecommunications network, which then facilitates. The functionality of the fiber optic system.
That's, that's what I thought and, and, and I appreciate that. And, and, and linked to that, um, is the question, maybe it's tangential. Um, but I think appropriate at any time to discuss whether it addresses the fundamental issue of, of access. Uh, I think you called it digital equity. Um, so I'm assuming that this zoning change would facilitate that issue as well. If it also improves the uh installation of whatever we've agreed to with sci-fi.
The zoning ordinance amendment does not directly.
Correct.
Relate to access other than it makes it much more abundant and much more available generally.
Right, so it has, it has the effect of it.
Should have that positive effect of, of being more available.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, opening the door for the wireless communication companies to install five G, that's a good thing. We wanna make sure we get as much five G. Accessibility here as possible, cause it will tie into sci-fi, even though it's a different project, a different network so to speak. But like you said, there will probably be some areas where, where the fiber optic will need to tie into five G. So, yeah, very, very good stuff here.
Yeah.
Are you have any questions or a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Loa, second by Creo?
Second by Bishop, wasn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
All good though.
Second by Mister Bishop.
Yes. Mayor Protim Bencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye. Okay, sixteen two, City Attorney Beck, this is uh, public hearing for proposed ordinance fifteen sixty eight. Uh, staff to read the um, uh, title of the ordinance, please.
Thank you, this is ordinance number fifteen sixty eight amending Palmdale Municipal Code Section two point oh four point oh six oh. To be consistent with the intent of ordinance number fourteen oh seven two thousand ten, authorizing the city manager to appoint the city clerk.
Okay.
Who appoints right now?
So the staff to read the title of the ordinance. So that, look, this says it twice on my paper here, so, alright, we got it. Uh, so we need a motion to introduce ordinance number fifteen sixty eight, please. Creo, need a second?
Second.
Second by Bencourt, City Clerk.
Mayor Protim Bencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. So we have a public hearing on this, IT, do you have anybody uh in the queue over there, sir? Nope, City Clerk, do you have any in there?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience wish to address item number sixteen point two? Seeing none, motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved.
Have a motion by Loa?
Second.
Second by Bishop, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. Staff recommendation is to adopt number, ordinance number fifteen sixty eight. Have a motion on that?
So move, can we ask questions or?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Before? Um, so essentially, uh, there's a, I guess there's an inconsistency uh between the municipal codes here.
Correct.
And um, you know, this is no reflection on, on, on our um, city clerk. I think she's, she's doing an admirable job. Um, but I, I see this uh. Originally, the city clerk was appointed by the city council, and that was changed in twenty ten. That's an example of, of how I feel that the city council cedes its authority to staff. Which generally speaking, I think we should not be doing. But I understand the, that this in effect has been in place since at least twenty ten, which is eleven years ago almost. And, and it's just to make the uh, to make the codes uh consistent with each other. Um, but why it was uh changed back in twenty ten, uh, I don't know what the policy reasons were behind that, but. It was hap- it happened, so. I just think that we as a council have to be wary about conceding our authority to staff. Because our job is really to dictate policy and uh, and make sure that it gets carried out. That's the only comment I have on this.
But uh, if you're not comfortable with that, uh, would you propose that the ordinances be flipped? And that the uh, and that we revert to the previous?
You know, I'm also not a, a, I'm not an advocate for, you know, causing upheaval or anything like that. I mean, this has been in place now for ten years. Um.
I just wanted to make sure you asked all the right questions, that's all.
This is a, just pointing out that, that we need to be wary about giving um, our. Essentially our jurisdiction to staff. I mean, we have an excellent staff, but we also have our obligations.
Okay, anybody else? Good point.
No, I'll move to approve, I think uh, I think everything's working out well. I think we have a fantastic city clerk. And uh, I'm assuming that uh down the line or any council down the line can change this if need be, is that correct Mister Beck?
That is correct, it's the council's ordinance.
Okay, so with that, I'll move to approve.
Do you have a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen sixty eight by Mister Bishop?
All second.
Second by Bencourt.
Mayor Protim Bencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. Alright, so uh, we have item number sixteen point three. Public hearing and review of proposed resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero three six for adoption, Mister Heffernan?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The next five items actually are the. The uh, city's annual review of the benefit assessment districts in the city. And uh, this is the third action by the city council. On May fourth, first step was directing the engineers report be prepared on June first. Second step was to approve the engineers report and make a notice of intent to. Uh, to increase the assess or to uh, adopt the engineers report and the third step is tonight. And so I'll treat each one of these differently, but I wanted to give that background. So sixteen point three, this is to adopt a resolution to approve the engineers report. And continue the levy and assessments, the collection of assessments within the city of Palmdale Drainage Benefit Assessment District number one. And number two thousand six dash zero two, these are the Anavari and Ritter Ranch Project Benefit Assessment Districts. Uh, staff is recommending the approval of the engineers report and continuation. The CPI of past year is interesting that it was point nine per- ninety seven percent. Uh, and uh, as opposed to last year when we did this, it was three point eight, so you can see what COVID kind of did to us there. So do I read the uh, ordinance?
Yeah, it's actually, yeah.
A resolution, sorry, resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero three six. Resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the engineers report and continuation of levy and collection of assessments. Within the city of Palmdale Drainage Benefit Assessment District number one and number two thousand six dash zero two. For fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, so we'll open a public hearing, uh, IT, you have anybody in the queue on this item?
Not at this time, Mayor.
City Clerk?
No, sir.
I need a, anybody in the audience seeing none, need a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by um. Second by Mister Creo, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. Staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero three six. Any questions, comments or a motion?
Move to approve.
Mister Loa, makes a motion? I need a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Creo, City Clerk.
Mayor Protim Bencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. So Chuck, you're up again.
Yes, Mayor.
Public hearing and review of resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three eight.
Yes, sir, this is the uh, staff's recommendation to adopt the engineers report or approve the engineers report. And uh, which would be a recommendation for continuation of the levy and collection of assessments within the city for the landscape maintenance. Assessment districts and annexations for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And again, this is CPI of uh point nine seven and uh, I will read the resolution. Resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero three eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the engineers report. Continuation of lev- and levy, continuation of the levy and collection of assessments. Within the city of Palmdale Landscape Assessment Districts and annexations for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, sir. We'll open a public hearing, IT.
Not at this time, Mayor.
City Clerk?
No comments.
Anybody in the audience wish to address sixteen point four? Need a motion to close public hearing, please?
All.
Mister Creo, second by Ms. Bencourt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. The staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero three eight. Comments, questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, this. Mister Creo made the second, City Clerk?
Mayor Protim Bencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye. So sixteen point five, Chuck, you're up on CC twenty twenty one dash zero four zero, sir?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a recommendation by staff to adopt the engineers report. For the continuation of the levy and collection of assessments within the city Palmdale Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement. District for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Uh, might note that this, this one, uh, there, the CPI is collected a little bit differently. This CPI for this, the annual is point zero or zero point eight seven percent as opposed to nine seven, just because of the. The uh, the timeframe. Uh, there is a carryover of point seven four percent from the previous year. Uh, the three point eight for uh CPI, because of a cap of three percent. For the parks district in the, in that ordinance. Uh, it could be, it was a maximum of three percent last year, even though the CPI was three point eight. That point eight percent or point seven four, four percent is carried over to the following year, can be. So, we're recommending that we do that and uh, so the total is an increase of one point six one percent.
But we don't have to carry over that additional percentage?
Well, that's our recommendation, I guess the um, I guess we could. I don't, I don't know, I guess the, the, the resolution doesn't, doesn't necessarily uh mention that. So the amount, so I mean, we could probably modify it if you wanted to.
Did you have any idea what does it do in a dollar amount to a single family home?
Uh, we have someone from MBS on the phone and I would ask that uh, maybe he has that, has that answer, I don't think I have that answer.
Uh, good evening, this is Dave Ketchum with MBS, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I can look very quickly at the report, I believe, if we have the uh, rate table handy. But it will be a very, very nominal change, a single family is.
But also, could you have to take the time to look at that, this is the reason why I asked. Uh, which is recently, about a year and a half, maybe two years now, lower the uh park development fees. There is no connection of the park development fees with this, Chuck, is there?
Well, there's not a direct result, but.
The developer fees, I think you might be referring to the developer fees, which were reduced. This is, this is.
I can tell you, you can put your pipe on.
Chuck, you want me to?
Okay, maybe I just need you a little closer, sorry about that. So the, the fee you're referring to was the developer fee. Which is, which is charged on new uh, new development.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the, the apartments were particularly, that was the one that was reduced.
It was single families as well.
Single families. Okay.
Yeah, this, this is, this is pretty ongoing maintenance of the existing facility.
Correct.
Count, if I may, this assessment district goes towards the debt service on the bond that was issued back in two thousand six. There is leftover funds which we do use to maintain the parks. So I, staff is recommending the carryover because the park development fees were decreased, so they're interchangeable. But the development impact fees can only be used to enhance capacity due to development. Whereas this fund pays for existing maintenance of parks as well as paying the debt service. And the debt service will balloon in a few years and so we wanna make sure we keep pace and ensure there's enough funding to pay for it, to its maturity.
Thank you.
I, uh, what might answer your question, not exactly what the increase would be, but the uh, the total assessment. Uh, per single family unit is uh, for, for zone A and. Uh, zone C is fifty six dollars and fifty two cents annually. And for zone of benefit B, it's twenty eight dollars and twenty six cents annually with the one point six.
And you can find that chart on page one of the engineers report.
Any other questions?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna um.
Read the ordinance or the?
Yeah.
Resolution.
Chuck, you kind of covered your report, but go ahead.
Trying to find the resolution. There we go. Okay, resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero four zero. Resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the engineers report. And continuation of the levy and collection of assessments within the city of Palmdale Park Maintenance. And Recreation Improvement District for fiscal year twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing on this item, IT, do you have anybody on the queue?
Not at this time, Mayor.
City Clerk, anybody in the audience wishing to address item number sixteen point five? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mister Loa?
Second, Creo.
Second by Mister Creo, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So ordered. Staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number two zero two one dash zero four zero. Questions, comments or motion?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash oh four oh.
Okay, so I had uh Mister Loa and uh Ms. Bencourt simultaneously on that?
Okay, I'll do the second.
Okay, excellent. And uh, City Clerk?
Mayor Protim Bencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. So item number sixteen point six.
Yes, Mayor.
Public hearing and review of resolution number C C twenty twenty-one dash zero four two. Mr. Heffernan?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The, this is staff's recommendation for continuation of levy and collection of assessments for the streetlight maintenance. Assessment districts and annexations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, this is uh, recommended to be increased by the CPI of point nine seven percent. And I will read the resolution. Resolution number C C twenty twenty-one dash zero four two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the engineer's report. And the continuation of the levy and collection of assessments within the City of Palmdale Streetlight Maintenance Assessment Districts. And annexations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, sir. So we're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. IT?
Not at this time, Mayor.
City clerk?
No, sir.
Nothing? Anybody in the audience wish to address sixteen point six? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public hearing, please?
To move.
Second.
And second by Mr. Corio. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none? So ordered. Staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number C C two zero two one dash zero four two. Motion or?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Loa. City clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfire.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sixteen point seven, that's a review, public hearing, review of proposed resolution two zero two one dash zero four three for uh, adoption. Mr. Heffernan?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. This is staff's recommendation to continue the charge for, for the operation and maintenance of the Palmdale Sewer Collection System. For fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I might note that uh, the engineer's report found that the sewer assessment district and the maintenance is in good shape. And they're recommending no increase in the assessment. Uh, and they're anticipating, although this will be looked at every year, but they're anticipating that, that will probably stay level for the next three to four or five years. And I will read the resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero four three, resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale updating the sewer collection service charge and ordering. Continuation of the charge for the operation and maintenance of the Palmdale Sewer Collection System for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Um, IT?
None, sir.
City clerk?
No, sir.
Anybody in the audience want to address this one? So seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public hearing?
To move.
Mr. Loa?
Second.
Second by Ms. Benencourt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing done, so ordered. Staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number C C two zero two one dash zero four three?
You know, I, I um, I'm impressed by your statement that uh, we're not seeing any inflationary trend as it affects these uh, sewer maintenance programs. Uh, in light of the fact that inflation is setting in across the board. So if we can keep the line here, that's very commendable.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll commend staff. Uh, and the program that was set up years ago, way before I came. Uh, the maintenance program that we're on is keeping, I think we've had one sewer overflow within the last five years. And it, and that was because a pool contractor dumped some concrete in the, in the sewer. Um, so that's contributing directly to these kinds of ability to keep these rates level or even uh, to go down. So uh, staff's doing a great job, the sewer maintenance staff particularly, and uh, commend them.
Actually, I stopped, I saw the, the, the team out of sewer with the truck. They had the manhole cover open and I, I had to stop and, and just talk to them and see. And I looked inside and, and boy, those were some clean sewers. They told me the schedule they go on and it was, it was very impressive. I mean, they're out there every, every workday cleaning them and I actually, I learned that there's actually only two pumps. That actually in the entire city, because the rest of it goes downhill into the sanitation district. Is that correct? There's two pumps at the rest of it is actually all flown, flowing by gravity. Which has also got to be another great part of our sanitation system.
And even though it sounds mundane and it sounds, it's super clean, it needs to be because every time we have a sewer overflow, we have potential for a big fine. So this program is important, not just for the residents to keep making sure that they're able to use their facilities, but it, it keeps the city out of hot water.
And a very unhealthy example of that is what happened at the Hyperion plant down in Los Angeles.
Oh, yes.
Just happened.
I'm still trying to figure out exactly what day that was, because we were down there. I'm trying to think, geez.
Seventeen million gallons, is it?
Yeah, seventeen million gallons.
That were spilled out into the ocean.
It's terrible.
So.
I've been in some other cities in the valley. I won't mention their name, but I mean, we've all been there where you, you get a whiff of the sewage and you're like, oh, what's that? That's, that's right. And uh, I, I can say I've never had that experience here in this city. I've never actually gotten a whiff of the sewage. So that's the testament to how clean our sanitation system is.
Well, I know the uh, when there's issues with critters and stuff and usually that comes along with the, when there's rain or something like that. And those little bugs decide they want to start moving around. You know, the guys are right on top of that. When somebody reports it and there's a problem with a manhole. And he, give them a good accurate address, the guys are right out there taking care of it, so. All right, uh, any, anything else or a motion uh, on that resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number C C twenty twenty-one dash oh four three.
Second.
Mr. Loa and um, Mr. Bishop?
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfire.
Yes. So sixteen point eight, um, public hearing, review of proposed resolution C C twenty twenty-one dash zero six one for adoption. Ms. Saxton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a resolution number C C twenty twenty-one dash zero six one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving entertainment permit number twenty-one dash zero two and dance permit number twenty-one dash zero three. For a banquet facility located at thirty thirty East Palmdale Boulevard Suite G. And that is known as Palmdale Event Hall. So this location currently has an existing use permit. And their intention is to use this site for banquets, uh, such as a quinceañera. Um, they have no calls for service. Their hours of operation proposed are ten AM to ten PM, Monday through Thursday and ten AM to twelve AM, Friday through Sunday. They also have some special conditions that are part of the resolution, that all entertainment activities should be conducted in compliance with our municipal code. And that the operation of any sound amplifier or similar machine or device shall not be plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet from the building between. Hours of ten PM and eight AM. And that they have to have approval of a manager's permit and it needs to be onsite at all times. I am available for any questions.
Is this uh, location um, in like in a shopping center type of uh, place?
Yes.
And so it's, it's got neighbors on, on either side, immediately adjacent to it?
Yes, there's a market, a restaurant, and um, I can't remember what is just in the north of it, but yes.
It's thirtieth east and Palmdale Boulevard and it's, it's by mostly businesses.
Right. So are those businesses in operation during the same time that these uh, these events are going to be taking place?
There's definitely overlap because there's daytime hours um, for this site. Um, so yes.
So, but they can't start the programming until ten PM? Is that, is that it? They don't start before that?
No. And they would close on Monday through Thursday at ten PM.
I see, I see.
This uh, location has gone through a conditional use permit and parking has been part of that analysis. So it is in compliance with municipal code if that is a concern of the council.
How long has that been in existence?
It was approved um, the fall of twenty twenty.
Okay, so about a year?
Yep, about a year.
Less than a year. Um, and what's the, what's the size of, what's the size of the, of the, of the location?
You know, unfortunately, I don't have that information in front of me. I apologize.
Gentlemen, my head.
Wonderful. Forty, there we go.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask you to come up anyhow, so. Forty-eight hundred square feet?
Yeah, what we do is, is basically.
It's social events. The type of dance that they do is like a daughter and mother dance or groom and, and bride dance. That's the type of dance that we do. We do all uh, permit, uh, the CUP permit for them.
Right. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
Uh, no, I, I commend you for opening a business in our city. I appreciate that.
Oh, yes.
Um, I'm looking at the map here. I, I see that it's surrounded by other businesses, auto parts, furniture.
Yeah, if, if enough parking.
Yeah, there's enough parking, especially in the evening.
And the business actually, they close like about seven PM. In our, our event, they start like eight, nine, ten.
Okay, so, so there's, the businesses that are right next to you are not going to be in operation essentially uh, once your events start?
It's actually next to our door. It's, it's like a thrift store that they, they second hand close at the end, but they close at five.
They close at five o'clock, okay.
So there's no bother for them.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We know that uh, entertainment is something that's needed in the community and um, you know, so long as it's safe and doesn't impact uh, the community, then that's a, that's a good thing to have.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think Mr. Corio.
You guys are welcome. Anytime that you guys want to have any kind of meeting event there, we're there for you.
But, Mr. Corio, did you have a question or something, sir?
No, he answered the question for me. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Benencourt?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay, um, let's see. So we need to, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, we have to open a public hearing. Is there anybody else? Uh, do, IT, do you have any?
No, sir.
City clerk?
Not at this time.
Okay, anybody else want to address any item on uh, any issue on uh, sixteen point eight for this permit? In the audience? Okay, seeing none, need a motion to close public hearing, please?
To move or second?
Okay, I have Mr. Bishop and Mr. Loa to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none? So ordered. So the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero six one?
Uh, move to approve.
Mr. Bishop? Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Loa seconds?
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfire.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, sir. Ma'am?
Thanks for staying, thanks for staying all night with us.
Yeah, yeah, but if I'm paying attention, I'd have moved that up. I'm sorry. City clerk, when we have all those mundane engineering reports that Chuck is gonna bore us to death about. Uh, if we have a public permit or something, can, can we, maybe get a heads up that that's the one and maybe we can adjust it?
Absolutely.
On the agenda, because they, 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 they were very patient to me.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, uh, so seventeen point one. Uh, so I'm assuming that's you.
So at the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one City Council meeting, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget was approved. As a result, the city's classification and pay plan for general positions has been updated and requires City Council approval. The following positions within the city's management team receive the same five percent increase as the other full-time positions listed in the class and pay plan for general employees. Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works, Deputy City Manager, Director of Economic and Community Development. Director of Neighborhood Services and Director of Parks and Recreation. The City Manager and City Attorney each received a two percent increase. In addition, the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS, requires the city to approve class and pay plans separately, not in combination with other items on the agenda such as the budget. To comply with CALPERS guidelines, staff is submitting the class and pay plans for general positions for approval. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt resolution number C C two thousand twenty-one dash zero six seven, amending the city's classification and pay plan for general positions. And I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any questions on this item for? What we should hear? Or a motion?
Uh, move to approve. Second?
Have a motion by Mr. Bishop and a second by Mr. Loa. City clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfire.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not that you have to wait wasn't important either, but. Just the way it falls sometimes. All right, let me see, we are at uh, number eighteen. Anybody want to report on uh, AQMD? Mr. Bishop?
Uh, yeah, we'll pull up my notes here. I believe we didn't actually give out any uh, any funds this week. I think we got a lot of housekeeping stuff and the main thing we're working on is new regulations in regards to uh, SEQA. Um, if you recall, I think you were in the meeting with us, um, that we're, we're looking into for some of our contractors out here. But from my notes here, I don't see that we actually awarded any uh, any monies to small or local businesses that week.
Yeah, so we're uh, I think, I think uh, AQMD staff is doing a little battle with the state uh, on behalf of our big contractors out there.
Yeah.
So uh.
Hopefully they can get that resolved and continue with business.
Yep. Uh, ABTA uh.
Attended that and um, continue to uh, demonstrate how the electrification of our fleet is uh, having a very beneficial impact. Not only on the environment, but in terms of uh, economy, financial economy, so. That's what we had there.
Excellent. Uh, Contract Cities Association primarily been dealing with legislative updates uh, over there. Audit Committee, I don't think the Audit Committee, Audit Committee meet?
I don't think it did.
All right.
I think late September.
Investment third, I don't think met. Uh, High Desert Quarter, we just uh, we just had a meeting, got an update and uh, the um, uh. The, they're moving forward with the recorded decision and um, it's just uh, it's, it's moving forward. It's just, a lot of it is just uh. Waiting on other guys right now, but uh, Mike uh, gave us a very good uh, briefing on that uh, moving forward.
Was there a quorum at the meeting?
Yes.
That was okay.
Yes. Um, League of Cities, same report basically as uh, with uh, the um, Contract Cities Association. Uh, dealing with uh, mostly legislative issues, uh, primarily housing items and stuff like that. So that's the uh, uh, that's the, that's the big ticket right now, so. Sanitation.
I think we both went to that.
Yep, sir.
And uh, very brief meetings. I mean, we, we get a report, it's very efficiently done and uh, we just want to keep the line on not, not increasing uh, the cost uh, to our residents.
That was probably the motivation for Chuck to come back with no increase on the city. Sewer side there, so that was the, that was the big item on that. NCTC?
Uh, we're meeting uh, next week.
Okay.
Meet next week on Monday, I agree.
Okay, recycled water?
Well, uh, we're changing our plan again with recycled water, uh, just based on funding and opportunities and, and. Uh, limited options and I think right now we're looking at uh, more of a ground recharge uh, project. Putting water in the ground, storing it for later, so to speak. That's, I think that's what we're looking on, uh, looking at doing right now with some of the reserves.
Excellent. Uh, Southern California Association of Governments on the Regional Council, Mr. Corio?
Very interesting meeting of the Regional Council. Uh, item number twenty-one on the agenda, it was supposed to be just the status update. Uh, but it ended up uh, being a voting item to uh, have a report. It was so contentious that it passed twenty-five to twenty-four, uh, just one good difference.
What, what was it, what was it, the, the uh, title of the topic, sir?
The so-called green screen background on and status update, there are some uh, groups that are opposing the, the way the plan was presented. Uh, because of the housing uh, concerns. Uh, BIA was one of them and other ones. Hmm, that they feel that uh, what's in the report is not attainable, uh, because of the way that it was. uh because of the way that it was drafted and the way that uh housing projects can can take so much time and be so expensive. Um so it was just decided to go back and talk to these groups uh to see if we can come back with a a resolution as to how to modify the so-called green print background um as it was presented. Uh but it was just interesting, uh twenty five to twenty four, uh that was something that I never experienced before. Uh the rest of the items, uh they were just like uh same kind of items. It was a quick uh meeting for the rest of the items, but that one twenty one just took a lot of a lot of a discussion.
That's the way that runs over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything on transportation that you had, Richard, for that?
No, no, I don't have anything.
No, okay. And anything from housing?
No, it was a pretty simple agenda really. The the only item uh to work action was the transfer of some units from Orange County to Yorvalina, I believe, going back to the real allocation. Uh as you know, some of the cities uh appealed the decisions. Uh but this one, it was just a transfer of a minor number of units uh from Orange County to Orange County City. I think it was Yorvalina. Uh nothing significant really.
Alrighty, and uh U S Mexico Sister Cities Association. We're moving moving continuing to move forward with the planning on that. Um we have a in-house committee that's looking at uh helping with some of that planning and uh the uh we have a tentative schedule for uh the visitation in the in the late September, so. Uh State Prison, did was there a State Prison Committee meeting?
No, we did not have a meeting.
Okay. Alright, um anybody else? Uh maybe I'll start down the far end there. Mr. Bishop, anything you want to report on?
Uh yeah, I'll keep it brief. A lot of these things uh we were at together as a council. Uh May thirty first, attended Memorial Day ceremony, uh city council meeting June first, uh June sixth, Palmdale Sheriff's Car and Bike Show. That was that was fantastic. I think everyone had a good time there. Uh June eighth, Jolly Seniors uh Sun Village Barbecue and Neighborhood Watch Meeting. That was well attended. Um I also attended, uh there's the A V Q M D meeting, we talked about that. Uh June sixteenth, U S Tool Grand Opening. Um great building, great company, glad that they're here. I believe we attended that one together, mayor. Let's see. Uh June nineteenth, Homes for Families Ceremony. Uh a lot of you guys there were with me on that one. Recycled Water Meeting, uh June twenty third, Fireworks Safety Press Conference. Attended that. Uh June twenty fourth, we had a ice cream social for the staff here uh at City Hall. Uh June twenty sixth, Palmdale Pride Walk and the Walk on Words Ceremony. I believe we were all there for that one. Uh I attended the Sheriff's Town Hall virtually and um the the July second, we had the Auto Mall uh Food Truck Event. I stopped that at and that was pretty much it for me.
Mr. Loa?
Yeah, I attended many of the things although um I was uh uh out for part of that time. I was uh visiting family out of state and uh traveling. But um in any event, I did attend the sanitation district board. I think I was between Austin and Waco at that moment, but I got off the side of the road and and attended that meeting on June tenth. Uh we also attended the memorial flag raising ceremony at L A County Fire on Avenue S on June fifteenth. Uh I think many of us attended the uh Homes for Families Ceremony that Mr. Bishop alluded to. It was great to see A V Chevrolet uh step up to the plate with a major nomination. It was just really terrific to see those veterans, several several families coming forward uh to uh receive their keys and 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 take possession of those uh homes there.
Yeah, very emotional.
It was very emotional and Supervisor Barker was here as well uh attending and uh there were some great presentations there. A V T A Board Meeting, I talked about. Uh I did go to the Walk on Words Awards Ceremony. Um let's see, um on June twenty eighth, uh I attended a meeting with the city attorney with representatives from the District Attorney's Office on the issue of misdemeanor prosecutions. The um let's see. I attended various briefings during this last period. I wanted to mention uh the uh town hall that uh Sheriff Yanwawa came up and and uh and participated in. Uh he uh and I was present uh for most of it. It it was it was really remarkable to see the sheriff uh in the face of some very vociferous criticism from people in in the audience there. Uh take on point by point by point by point in many occasions, completely off-base statements about the sheriff and the sheriff's department. And I was just so impressed, and you captain as well, uh to see how he uh responded with respect and dignity and soft spoken but addressing the substance of the criticisms that were being levied against him in many occasions on many items, disproving the statements that were being made. I thought that was very impressive uh performance by the sheriff. I don't agree with him on everything, but he really was outstanding that night. I commend him. I'd like for him to know that. And um I did go to the fireworks event uh at the fairgrounds and uh Mr. Bishop was a an outstanding competitor there and Mr. Creo as well.
But but who won?
Well, the tug of war was won by the city of Palmdale twice.
Oh, okay. And who won the potato race?
Uh actually, I think the city of Palmdale did as well.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Oh, the mayor.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right.
It was a fun line. It was a lot of fun and 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 it was great. Uh.
But Megan, you know, I was just driving the car.
Yeah, Megan was really awesome.
Megan was the potato.
She was the star player that night.
That's right.
Let's see, um on July the seventh, I uh attended the booster, the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters Meeting, and I attended one in June as well. And then it was followed up with Coffee with a Cup. It was very well attended um at the Starbucks over on Forty South Street East. Uh it was a good, good, good turnout there. Um the the town hall meeting was on July the first. I attended that and uh the fireworks event we just talked about. Um the grand opening of the uh Palmdale Regional Medical Center Obstetrics, you know, the birthplace now. That Palmdale Regional Hospital is uh is now opening and uh very impressive facility that they have there. Among the uh clinical and medical kind of attributes that that has, I I was kind of impressed with the fact that they're actually going to be able to view babies from the outside looking in. I don't know how it's gonna work during the rainy season, but that's kind of a departure from what I've seen. And there were some prospective moms that were there as well, but uh that that was a good show. And I'm very happy that that's happening with our hospital. More good things to come, including um behavioral sciences or behavioral medicine, which is an acute issue in our community regarding mental health. That will be welcomed and that's something that they're working on right now to develop.
As well as the Neonatal Intensive Care Union.
And the Neonatal Intensive Care, that's right. That's a very important part. I may have missed a couple of things, but that's basically.
I think a lot of us, there's a lot of overlap. Mr. Creo, anything else?
Yes, yeah, on June first, the city council, June third, the SCAG Regional uh meeting, C E S D same day, June nine, city council briefing, June fifteen, the city council workshop, June twenty first, the Palm Recycled Water Authority regular meeting. June twenty fifth, I launched with the city manager, June twenty sixth, the Palmdale Pride Walk and the Voice Over Ceremony uh eh over at the Gelen Park. June thirtieth, I uh listened to the General Plan Advisory Committee Meeting, Community Community Meeting. Uh very interesting, the G P A K's meeting regularly and I believe there's one coming up either either this week or next week. Really good points that the G P A K uh discusses uh for this uh G P A K uh process. And then on July four, the City of Palmdale and City of Lancaster uh Firework Event that uh you guys mentioned. So it was a busy month for me as well. That's it.
Excellent. Uh Ms. Benkort?
Um I went ahead and submitted mine in writing. It's part of the record.
Okay, anything you want to specifically report on?
No, I was just, I was very excited to be part of Palmdale's first uh pride parade, so I I was really excited to be part of that and I hope that we continue to do that every year.
Excellent. Okay, I had a number of meetings. I'll go ahead and give my uh calendar to the city clerk, but uh to comply with the spirit and intent of A V twelve thirty four, I'll report on a couple of these. I met with uh the um administrators for a new senior center, living center. It's gonna be opening up over in uh over on the east side, the Regency Palm Center. It's uh sounds very uh uh very promising and uh with the aging population, nobody here included, uh we need more senior uh senior type facilities around there. Uh had a Public Safety Policy Committee meeting, uh again, doing a lot of review of uh the um the uh the various legislative issues and um and their processes as the through the uh through the state process. I represented at these Los Angeles County City Selection Committee. Uh that's where representatives to many of the county boards and agencies uh get their recommendations and we had uh county library and a couple of other boards that uh had some vacancies and reappointments that had to be handled there. The uh League Transportation, I was not on that one. You guys are handling transportation now. Couple of these items that we all attended. I had an outstanding lunch with the Santa Clarita mayor. We discussed a number of items. There's so many items that we have in common and uh areas that they're going through that we had to deal with and things that uh we have that they have some insight on. So those are those are always uh very productive meetings. Uh liability trust fund, um everybody's suing everybody and everybody's getting money. The flag ceremony for the out at the fire station, uh demographic workshop. That information is all online. But uh uh SCAG does an excellent job of providing those demographics for the community and uh some of the changes. U S Tool Group, um that was again a a great event, along with the Homes for Families Key Ceremony. Uh very emotional with all those folks. Let me see. Change of Command Ceremony out at the Air Force Plant for the uh four twelve security boss out there. The Pride Walk, again, that was was way went way beyond everybody's expectations out there. They were concerned about getting maybe twenty-five or thirty people out there and it's probably two or three hundred. Uh Walk on Words, uh the Auto Mall Food Event, uh that was that was uh that was amazing. We need to be doing that every Friday, so. Uh Coffee with a Cop, Chamber of Commerce Luncheon was very good. We had uh some uh kids come in from some high school. We met with them here uh with uh some of the uh senior staff uh and uh which uh these were a bunch of high school girls and uh we had coincidentally ladies from our management side and uh that were able to provide some guidance for them. Coffee with a Cop, uh but the only guy that wasn't there was the fire marshal. That place is packed, so. And people are are glad to get out. Uh and uh they had a storytime over there in a park. There was a nice little crowd over there the other day. Uh and uh and the O B G Y N uh uh the the O B department over there at the at the hospital. And we had our inaugural meeting today, uh the Palmdale Financing Authority Meeting. And it was mostly uh uh what's the word? Uh bookkeeping, uh taking care of uh uh all the uh perfunctory things that you have to do when you start up a new agency or authority. Uh I give the rest of the kind of routine stuff over on my uh report to the city clerk for the record. Marie, anything from the city manager's office from your corner of the woods over there?
No reports from the city manager's office.
Oh, come on.
Time to go home.
Okay, so item number twenty, we have any uh council request for any new agenda items to come forward?
Just just one thing, because I said I'd bring it up. I know we were having some problem with some illegal dumping on Old Harold. I just said I'd bring it up for our public work staff and Chuck to see if we can get some extra special attention to that area because for some reason.
So I I tell you, I got that email, you and I got the email together.
Yeah.
And I got I got ahold of Bruce and before I could get back on the email to the gentleman, um the it had already been followed up.
Right.
And and Bruce handled it, so you know what? Uh dumping's gonna keep happening. We're gonna catch him. Uh but you notice where that was occurring?
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to bring some attention to that spot because that's been a continual.
But physically, it was out of the curb because it couldn't get back in there and uh made it easier for our crew to go ahead and handle that. So there's a silver lining even on that dark cloud.
Yeah.
So and I know the city attorney is following up on
Yep.
some some arrests and citations that were issued on that item, so.
So we're we've already requested the misdemeanor issue uh prosecution by the city attorney, but uh I brought up the SciFi connection with that item that had to do with the uh wireless and the um I S Ps and so on. But I you know, we when we first uh agreed to have the city attorney, uh I mean not city attorney, but the city manager negotiate this contract with SciFi, um it was specifically asked that we have updates on that and uh we kind of touched on that tonight, but if we could have a.
Marie, can you ask to make sure that we have that the next meeting? Maybe get briefings on that between now and then?
There's also a a concern that perhaps is being addressed by the legislature that um what is actually happening with uh with this wiring around communities is not really crea- uh creating access to lower-income homes uh because it's the product is going to be more expensive than has been represented. And um it it I've understood that the uh assembly may be taking some action to make sure that uh that that promise is capped, uh because I think that was a large part of the reason why why we accepted that program. And I just want to make sure that that uh is something that uh that is going to benefit all of the residents of the city of Palmdale, but particularly low-income uh residents. So if we can have a to see whether there's any actual legislative action going on and uh and what's happening uh in that respect. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll just say with those sentiments, Councilmember Loa, uh as you know, that's something that I've been talking about for quite some time, so we can get those updates. Uh I also heard uh similar things about the uh end product not being available to low-income families and the goal to uh lower the digital divide. Uh but I think that we can get the the school districts uh to help with that too, because they're also getting federal money uh through the policies to um for communication and and education, uh lowering the the digital divide. So I think that that's that's important for the council to keep getting uh periodic updates. Thanks for bringing that up, uh Councilmember Loa.
Yeah, I think that that's uh uh that's a typical issue that occurs um when things these things get up at the state level is they 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 try to solve problems, create more issues and uh the legislation doesn't end up doing. It's like they're trying to solve the housing crisis by making it harder to build houses, so.
Well, I I as I understand it, and I didn't get a lot of information on this, but from a couple of sources, that uh that perhaps uh what's going to be ending up as the product after all of this uh installation uh does not necessarily mean greater access for low-income families and that's that's.
I think that's probably an item that was taken up the Transportation Communications and Public Works, but I'm not on that committee anymore, so. I don't I don't get that. I don't get that information, so I don't know that anybody here is over there, so.
But it's uh it's out there and it needs to be addressed.
Yes, it does.
We promised to have um updates from time to time and I think this would be a good time to do that.
So I have a a new item. I I don't really know how to add it, but um there's been some conversations floating around about possibly changing the date of our council meetings.
um, there's been some conversations floating around about possibly changing the date of our council meetings. And I know in the past, when we had tried to change it before, um, I was kind of stickler about it because I was teaching on certain nights. Um, if you guys wanna change the, the council night, I'm totally good, good with it because I'm only teaching on Mondays now. It won't affect my teaching schedule at all, so if you guys wanna bring that forward next time, I'm, I just want you to know that I'm totally good with it. It won't affect my, my other job at all.
My sen- my sense about that is that I don't think it's a good idea. Here it is, ten minutes till eleven, we've got a lot of staff members here. Their Thursday is actually the Friday for most people. Um, it's also, I think, a Thursday's a, a more difficult date for uh people to participate. It's hard enough as it is on Tuesday night. Uh, I think if we move it to Thursday, it begins to interfere with a lot of folks that are either in nine eighties or
I didn't know anything about Thursday, I just knew that we were possibly trying to change it. I just want to let you guys know that, the only night that I'm teaching is Monday.
The date I heard was Thursday and I think that's
Not where that came from, but that's something that I can jump in when it's my turn for uh council request.
Alright, so uh, I, I was just commenting, um, and I think that what I heard was a Thursday night. Um, and uh, I don't think that's a convenient date, I think it's very inconvenient for the public and for our staff who would have to be here on nights like this at almost eleven o'clock at night. When the following day, they may be taking the weekend off.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I adjusted my schedule after having been moved around on some of these committees and I, I've got commitments all the time. I mean, I made a point to make sure I stay clear on, on Tuesday, so, um, any any change would be unless this maybe Saturday, might uh
Can I jump, just so we don't have a discussion about it?
Saturday.
Well, just, let's not have a discussion about it.
City, city attorney is reeling us in, so.
Okay.
Can we bring the conversation to next meeting then?
I would be opposed to that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I, I have m- many things and I would miss many meetings, uh, making some changes, so. Alright, so let's, we can go ahead and bring it back for, for additional discussion if you wish, but uh.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I do have a couple of items uh for, or requests for council. Uh, if we can get an update on the uh landscaping around about on forty-seventh and Palmdale. And also an update on the paving uh on Avenue S and forty-seven. And the third item has to do with uh what was just discussed. Let me just give a little bit of background, if I can take just three minutes. Um, I'm a planner, my profession, city planner. I actually started working for the City of Palmdale in two thousand five to two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, I s- uh, started working for the City of Coachella as a, as an associate planner. A opportunity for me came up to uh get a promotion with a different city. I am now a principal planner with the City of Desert Huts Springs. Back in two thousand sixteen, when I, we were first selected, I was first selected and some of you. Uh, the council meetings used to be on Wednesdays, if you recall. So at my request, uh, we changed the meetings to Tuesdays from Wednesdays. I don't know where the conversation of the Thursday meetings came. I uh mentioned to the city manager and um that I had obtained a sort of a promotion moving up in my profession, like I said, I'm now a principal planner uh, with the City of Desert Huts Springs. The real issue is that Desert Huts Springs has their planning commission and city council meetings on Tuesdays. So yes, I am requesting that the council entertain the idea of changing the meeting day, I don't know where Thursday came from. Um, but a Wednesday would work, uh, if it works with the rest of the council. A plus side of a Thursday night that uh Mr. Loa mentioned it, yeah, staff uh has to work on Thursdays, but then they don't have to come back to work on Fridays. So I don't know if that's a good thing for staff, I think that it is. I'm a staff member. If I have to do a council meeting on a Thursday night and not having to get up early and go back to work, and that would be beneficial to me as a city employee. Uh, so that's my request. Uh, Wednesday or Thursday, that would work. It's because my job as a principal planner requires me to be at the planning commission meetings and the city council meetings with my new employer. So I would ask that uh you consider that. It is my livelihood, that's how I feed my family. And I think that I still have the right to represent the district that I was elected to represent. It can be inconvenient for some of you, maybe, but if you can consider to change the meeting days to either Wednesday and uh Thursday would work for staff, that's something that uh you guys can decide. But that is my request, that we can come back and discuss, uh, maybe even have a resolution to change the meeting days. If that is something that the rest of the council would agree to. That is my request.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
For me, Wednesday night doesn't work, I have commitments on Wednesday night.
I know, this seems
And also, the other issue is that I wanna, I wanna be heard. The issue also is that
We're having a discussion on the item, so that's what we have to avoid.
I'm sorry, sir.
We've, essentially, we're delving into having a discussion on the item and we would have to discuss it at the next meeting. But my only inquiry then with uh Councilman McCrea with us bringing it back is if we do it by ordinance and we propose a date and then we change that date, it would have to come back again. So do we want this back as an information item as a discussion and then you provide staff direction? And I'll ask Councilman McCrea what's your item? Or do you want us to pick a definitive date and propose that?
Which would require an ordinance change.
Correct. And that's, so if we were to bring an ordinance that says, say, Wednesday, if then upon discussion of the council, it is Thursday, that ordinance would have to come back to another regular meeting to be adopted. So would we like a discussion item to ferret out the issue or would we like to come back with a, are you giving direction for a definitive date?
There's uh two resolutions, one for Wednesday and one for Thursday. Then at the, the next meeting, we can discuss as a council what day would work best for all of us and have a resolution ready for adoption for either Wednesday or Thursday. Or maybe even Monday, I mean, that's, that's not a question either.
We gotta get into more discussion now and we just need, we kinda need to cut that off. Alright, so, um, whatever. Let's uh, we'll see who shows up what nights then, so. Alright, so, um, motion to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Okay.